We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Pastor Randy Patterson of Seacrest Presbyterian Church? Is he here? I am not seeing, all right, I guess I'm doing the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, thank you for giving us this holiday season of thanks. We appreciate everything that you do for us, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Ty Pennsorga.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And, excuse me, audience, we do hear you're talking, so if you'd like to comment to your neighbor, please step outside. Thank you. Any additions, solutions, or corrections? If I would like to move up 9C and 9A before administrative? What are those? 9C and 9A? Yes. I believe 9C is our city lobbyist, and 9A is considered options to rename Veterans Memorial Park. If so, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, state so by saying nay. Hearing none. The agenda is approved unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor Katz, would you like to begin?
Nothing to disclose at this time.
Vice Mayor McCray.
Thank you. Got a chance to attend the League of Cities luncheon that was held here in our great city. Awesome event. Just want to tell staff thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Kennis and also to John. We did get our reading, uh, reading for the record. We did win the City of Boynton. I just want to say thank you, and I want to say to staff, you know, I see you all at the Holiday Parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Romulus.
I'll follow on that same thought. Congratulations to the city. I'm really glad we regained that title for read for the record. And I want to thank Commissioner Ty Pennsorga for taking my place when I could not to go read to the kids at the library for me.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. And I have nothing else to disclose other than that, and I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I enjoyed it with my family. I also did enjoy the, um, the trip that we took to, um, to Texas. It was a very overwhelming and awesome experience to be there and, um, at the National League of Cities City Summit. Learned a whole heck of a lot, still trying to unpack about, unpack it all, but it was a great experience, so I want to thank, um, the commission for allowing for that, that opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pennsorga.
Good evening, everybody. I have no disclosures at this time. However, I also attended the City Summit, which was hosted by the National League of Cities in San Antonio, and I have to say that it may have been the best conference I have been to. It was truly, um, mind blowing in many ways, and, um, I've learned a lot, and I hope to bring that here to Boynton Beach. And I just want to highlight two particular experiences. While I was there, I visited the San Antonio Food Bank, and the reason I did that was because it's part of the Greater Feeding America Network, and as you know, we have a branch right here in our own backyard in Boynton Beach called Feeding South Florida. And what they do there is not a typical food bank. They do not just hand out food. What they also do, in addition to providing emergency support, is that they also have an industrial kitchen. So if anybody in the community wanted to learn a new trade in life, you can join for free, and you get to learn in small cohorts, and there will be expert chefs teaching you new trades, and part of their program is to help assign you and get jobs, whether it be at hotels, whether it be at restaurants. And I'm so excited to know that that is exactly what's coming right here in our city in Feeding South Florida. I believe it's on high ridge, right at the nexus of many of our districts. And the second experience is, I went to the Opportunity Zone Session. For those of you that are unaware, we have two Opportunity Zones in our city, and I think that this is a conversation we really need to come back to and have something more in-depth and robust. And we have a wonderful opportunity, if done right, to truly revitalize and turn around our neighborhoods. So I hope to revisit this topic of Opportunity Zones, but it was truly a wonderful experience, and I hope to bring back as much of that as possible to our hometown. Thank you.
All right. For myself, I've done a lot in the past month. On November 7th, I attended our Economic Developments Team Business Over Coffee. I invite the rest of the commission to attend. It'll be this Thursday at 7:30 at Fire Station 5. It was great to speak with the businesses, and I think we're doing, uh, putting our foot in the right direction for economic activity. I've read for the record over at Rolling Green and Galaxy. I went to discover the Palm Beaches for their meeting. I attended the Boynton Beach Veterans Task Force meeting and spoke to the Cub Scouts. On the 8th, I attended, uh, I met with UF Extension, and I got some flyers for our Parks and Recs Department. I know at one time we had a 4-H club here in Boynton Beach, because I saw the sign, but I think we kind of let that off, and I'd like to encourage our, uh, youth to do with the 4-H of head, heart, hands, and health. And that afternoon, I spoke with the students at Somerset Academy. On November 9th, I attended a basketball game between our Police Department and Parks and Recs. It was actually an amazing game to watch with a couple lead changes, it going down to the wire, and that ball that went in and out as time expired, it was something to watch. Sergeant McDevitt, I know I just saw your head, I think you were the MVP for the Police Department. I attended the groundbreaking for our Ocean Breeze East site. Very excited for that. We're going to have 120 affordable housing for very low and low incomes, plus a new home for our neighborhood offer program. I attended a ribbon cutting from Florida Tackle and attended a vent for Sierra Club. On November 11th, I attended our Veterans Day, and I want to thank all of the veterans who have served and who are serving, uh, for our military. On November 12th, I attended the Caregivers Lunch held by Healthier Boynton Beach. It gets better every year with more people, and I'd like to thank all the different sponsors and Ricky Petty for what he does. The 13th, I attended a Racial Equity Institute with, uh, the Healthier Del Ray and Boynton Beach to just see how we can brainstorm ways to increase equity in our two communities. On the 15th, I attended a TPA meeting workshop regarding the Long Range Transportation Plan. On the 16th, I went to the Caradat Center. I met with people from Legal Aid and want to give out information regarding the community ID that is still available to anyone in Palm Beach County, and the next event will be Thursday, December 5th, at the First Congressional Church of Lake Worth. In order to get a community ID, you need to bring photo identification, proof of residency, and $20 cash. And I have some information for the board about that, that I'll ask the city clerk to put in your files. Also, I met with representatives from NAMI and the Juvenile Probation Officer, so if our Police Department is working with the Juvenile Probation Officer, I'd like to get an update on that. And attended our monthly Boynton Beach Art District Event. And on the 17th, I had a meeting with Tom Kaiser. The 18th, I attended the Historical Society. I thought it was fascinating to learn about the archaeology of Palm Beach County and the different mounds, the different history that we have here. The 19th to the 24th, I attended the National League of Cities in San Antonio, and I want to bring into the sunshine a conversation I had with Commissioner Pennsorga about our Parks and Recs Department regarding the possibility of using more of a deposit rather than a fee for our Parks and Recs Department so that we, I, we don't currently know how many open spots, or if there are open spots for our Parks and Recs Department, so I'd just like to actually get that number, to see a simple spreadsheet of how many programs that we offer and how many people actually go to those programs, so that we can make a decision what, uh, just to see how things are going. On the 25th, I attended the General Employees Public Pension Meeting and the Quantum Park Overlay Development District. On the 26th, I was invited by the Del Ray Chamber of Commerce to attend their Legislative Delegation with representatives from Joe Casello, Mike Caruso, Al Chiket, Bobby Powell. And then on the 27th, again, I'd like to thank the city and the CRA for having, I think, the best League of Cities Lunch over at Ben Venuto, and that evening I hosted the forensic delegation. On the 28th, I want to give thanks for the Thanksgiving that I had, and I hope everyone else had a great Thanksgiving. And to move on to that, had a great Black Friday, a Small Business Saturday, and a Cyber Monday. And then this morning, I attended the Legislative Delegation as a Board of Member from the Palm Beach County League of Cities. I spoke about water resources, and I want to thank Colin for his insight regarding the reused water and how we need help from the State Department, or the state, to make sure that the South Florida Water Management District is not issuing permits, uh, so that they, more properties are using reused water. And I remind everyone that it is Giving Tuesday, so today is the day that you can give to your favorite nonprofit. And that is it for me. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to say to you and to Commissioner Pennsorga, I want to tell you all, thank you for bringing back a report. I'm one of those that set up here so that whenever you all go to represent the city, that you all should come back and at least let us know that you did learn something by spending taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Oh, no, my report's coming up.
Say what?
I got, I got a big report. I did a PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, Jesus.
Yeah.
I enjoy, I enjoy the low one, I'm, thank you.
Yeah. So if there's no more informational items, we'll move on to announcements. Sing none. Our first announcement is a presentation of certificates of recognition to South Tech Academy Work-Based Learning Opportunity Program Student Interns Carlos Garcia, Tristan Schmidt, and Franco Laggio for their internship completion, a summary of the internship provided by ADA Coordinator Assistant Ted Goodenough.
Surprise, it's Debbie.
Okay.
Um, I would just ask if there's a way we could table this until the rest of the interns arrive, just later in the announcements.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next announcement is by Eleanor Kressel, our Public Communications and Marketing Director, regarding the 49th Annual Holiday Parade, Light Up the Park, and the introduction of Grand Marshal that will lead the parade.
Good evening, Eleanor Kressel, Marketing Director. Last month, we encouraged the community organizations to enter our 49th Holiday Parade, and tonight, we're excited to announce that Saturday, December 7th, over 2,000 parade participants, representing 62 organizations, plus Police and Fire Department Honor Guards, Fire Truck and Motor Units, will make some noise in downtown Boynton. The parade is this Saturday, December 7th, beginning at 4:00 PM. Following the parade is the Light Up the Park Event in Dewey Park. And tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce to you this year's Grand Marshal, Joanie. You might have read all about Joanie in the newspaper and saw her on TV, but she is Miss Super Senior USA, who will be flying out the next day after her parents at our parade to Las Vegas to compete in the title for Super Senior Universe. So welcome, Joanie.
Wow. (applause) Yes, I am Miss Super Senior USA 2019. I'm Joanie Helgeson, and I just turned 80.
Wow.
(laughing) I'm very honored to be selected as the Marshal of the Boynton Beach 49th Annual Holiday Parade. Who knew at 80 years of age I would be a winner in a few pageants? Plus, wearing a bathing suit in the competition, who knew? I never thought I was good enough to compete, especially at this stage in my life. I'm thankful for my talent as a harpist and the ability to compete. I thank God every day for my perfect health, and I can still bound out of bed every morning. I'm looking forward to Saturday, and good luck to the other participants in the parade. Thank you. (applause)
Eleanor?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we ask for proof of, of age and proof of identification from Miss Super Senior? Because I don't believe it.
Not buying that thing about 80 years old, not buying it.
We went to her house to film her for our Facebook Video Live, and she says, well, let me play my harp for you for a little bit, and I'm going to post the video tonight of her playing. It's incredible, and she self-taught herself on the harp.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And next, I have, I have the announcement that the Solid Waste Division is having their Tire Amnesty Week for the city residents, residents from December 2nd through December 6th, 2019. That means it is this week. They gave us a presentation last week. Does the board have any questions? Sing none. Moving on to announcement about, yes?
I'd like to know since it's already started, how is it going?
Yes.
Yeah, one day, I'd like to know how is it going. I'm just saying, did you pick up tires?
Good evening, David S. Monastin from the Solid Waste Division. We are currently having Tire Amnesty Week. We started yesterday. We're asking everyone to be a little bit patient with us because of Thanksgiving holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, we're a little bit behind. Tomorrow, we'll have additional staff to sweep the Monday and Tuesday routes altogether. Last year, we picked up, uh, last fiscal year, we picked up 2.2 tons, and la, um, this year we picked up 7.99 tons, so it's going pretty well. So we kind of quadrupled the amount of tires that we picked up fiscal year over year.
Very nice.
Wait, wait, stop. Last year, you picked up how many?
2.2 tons.
How many you picked up this year?
This year, uh, we just started for the next fiscal year, but this past fiscal year, 7.99 tons. Almost eight tons of tires.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
I mean, and now I'm curious, what happens to all these tires?
Uh, we disposed of those tires at the Solid Waste Authority on 45th, and we do have a disposal rebate that comes to us at the end of the year.
And they just shred them up and use them, like reuse them as like rubber and stuff like that?
Yes, they use them for, uh, materials and part, uh, resources and, and list tracks and a bunch of different things they use them for.
Oh, thank you.
And I got a question, not necessarily on the tires, but let's say the, uh, people got big electronics this past weekend, if they have a big TV, should they just put it out for their regular bulk, or is there something else that we should do?
Uh, the Solid Waste Authority is currently accepting, um, electronic devices for all the Palm Beach County residents. They can go to Lantana, to the Lantana Transfer Station to dispose of them.
Okay.
And there's no cost for that.
But if we, um, bring, just leave it out of bulk, it's going to get, uh...
Oh, yes, we, we do pick them up, but we encourage folks to also go to the Lantana Transfer Station to dispose of them, as they usually call the Solid Waste Division, to inquire about electronic devices and batteries and all that stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the announcement about grants and ADA Coordinator receiving the Champion of Inclusion Award. Is this Debbie or Ted?
I want to say something quick.
Yes, who won it?
I'd like to read this. She's up.
I know it's uncomfortable to teach your own horn, but you have to tell them what happened.
Oh, my goodness. All right, well, um, there, there is an awards that are offered annually by the Unicorn Children's Foundation and the Special Needs Advisory Coalition of Palm Beach County, and I was nominated by Stephanie Soplop, our Recreation and Assessment Specialist, for the Champion of Inclusion Award. And, um, the award is, is based on, um, working to make sure that we are including everyone in every way possible that we can. The City of Boynton Beach can be very proud. We are the only city who's ever represented at these events and these awards, and, um, it's an honor to represent our city, and I appreciate all the support that the city manager and the commission have given in our inclusion efforts, and also the way the departments have embraced, um, everything that we've put before them. And it's just been a tremendous effort by all, and I'm happy to be, um, able to represent the city.
And did Stephanie win that one last year?
Stephanie got the Employee of the Year Award last year, yes.
Okay, so we're, you know, back to back.
Good stuff in Boynton.
Excellent.
You're setting a high bar.
Yeah, congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1152.08][1152.08](applause)
All right. Moving on to the presentation of the monthly Town Square Project Update by the Town Square Development Team.
So Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. Hopefully, um, this presentation will be interesting, and we're going to, uh, walk you on a little adventure here of Town Square, but I wanted to start with this slide. We are, uh, right now currently, as you know, under construction. The project is, the city's portion of the project is on schedule and slightly under budget, so we're maintaining that throughout the project. The team's doing a great job getting things up and getting things built. Hopefully, we'll get you all into these buildings here soon for some tours, so you can see the progress. So we're doing really well there, but tonight, we wanted to, um, really present the new adventure land that we're creating in, for our Town Square. And this started with some value concepts we came up with, uh, through, through workshops we had with the public, and this was a project to replace Kids Kingdom. If you remember, Kids Kingdom was there, it was worn out, it was needed to be replaced, and so we went to the public and we said, what do you want to do, and where do you want to go with this? And so we came up with these value concepts that we worked through, that we wanted to make sure that the new place for families to go and, and, uh, learn and play and live would meet all of these values. As you're aware, we, the, the, we came up with two areas we're going to build these systems in. One is behind the Schoolhouse Children Museum, and that'll be an area for zero to five-year-old, uh, kids, and then from five to 12-year-olds going to be next to the Cultural Center. So what did we want to do? We wanted, we wanted to make an adventure for kids. We don't want to just put in playground equipment, because everybody does that. We wanted to do something unique to Boynton. So we went out, we said, what, what is our inspiration for this? And the first thing is, is we want to, what was on the site that inspires what we want to do at the playground? And so you can see some of the historic pictures of the area. The top two, of course, are the Children's Schoolhouse Museum while it was a high school and then an elementary school, and the picture there, you see in 1928, that was our Cultural Center after it was knocked down by hurricane. That was nine months after it was finished. It got knocked down, then rebuilt, and now it's being rebuilt again, be opened as a Cultural Center. And then I found this picture of Franklin Pierce Farm. Not sure exactly where that is in Boynton, but it's in Boynton someplace, but it's a farm. Uh, and you know me, I'm partial to farms, so I had to put a farm picture. And again, looking at the inspiration, we want to look at the history of the First Coast Railroad coming through. Uh, you see a picture of the railroad. Um, and then what we want to do is, what are the things the public are looking for? So the first thing is, we looked at is, is we had these workshops, and they said, okay, what, what makes Boynton interesting? And so the history is, the Barefoot Mailman, that's the, uh, Charlie Pierce story, Charlie Pierce's. Henry Flagler brought the railroad through and the, uh, pump stations. We had the wreck of the, oh, shoot, I forgot the name of the boat.
Providence.
Yeah.
Providence.
There we go, that one, Providence. I can't say it, so I don't know why I'm trying, but, uh, and then, of course, we have the railroad and the beach and, and all the excitement, and so the, the public, we looked at all those, and we started using those as our inspiration. The second thing we did is, what makes us unique? And of course, the top left, we like hurricanes. It's not really unique, but it's unique to Florida, you know, our beach, our inlet...
Colin, excuse me, can somebody close that door, please, because I'm just saying, you know, it is distracted.
Come in or go out, because it's loud. I couldn't even hear myself.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, you know, hurricanes, the inlet, um, you know, our plant life, our farming, railroad, and so we tried to look at what Boynton Beach was and what it still is as inspiration. So with that, what do we want to tell the story? So parks should have a story, and so we tried to develop a story for this, and we looked at it, and in reality, you know, Charlie Pierce was the, I think, the first postmaster of Boynton Beach. Was in Boynton Beach, their house was actually, Susan will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but the house was actually right there across from the, where the Schoolhouse Children Museum is right now, where we planted the caipock tree. That was where the, the house was, the home was. So for us, that was a good inspiration, that's a good start, that's a, one of the historical families, it's not the only one, and we're going to honor all of the historical families in this, but that was one we started with. So with that, we came up with a design, and one of the things we said is, how do you get kids to, kids and families to walk through and enjoy all of the equipment that we're putting in? So we thought about the Barefoot Mailman, we thought about the experience of Florida, and we said, well, we're going to make this a Florida experience following the Barefoot Mailman's footprints. So if you see there on the screen, you'll see the footprints going throughout the park, and if you follow those footprints, it goes by every experience that you can have in this park. And these are experiences, these are not just things you go and play in, these are things you're going to learn on, you're going to learn the history of Florida, you're going to learn the, the, the environment of Florida and how it all works together. And in association with this will come other exhibits and things that go along with the play equipment, so it's a, it's a whole adventure that you can go through. So we're going to go through this park, this is the zero to five-year-old adventure area, and if you follow the footprints, um, the way this works, the first thing you come to is the Florida farm life. And so that's the piece of equipment we're putting in with some plants they spin on, slides, and again, remember, these are for zero to five-year-olds, these are all intended to be sensory, uh, adaptive learning equipment. This is stuff that kids learn on, they don't just play on. Um, it's, they're all, every piece of these, these equipments are inclusive to anybody who wants to play, any kid with any, anything going on with them, they can play on this equipment and learn from. So as you're following the footprints, next thing you come to is the Gladiola Garden. You know, we were known for growing gladiolis. And those are actually musical instruments that you can play on, shaped as flowers. And as you walk through, you come to the Everglades Experience. That's a sensory experience where there's all kinds of things that you can play with, and, and you get the feel, you see the grass blades, and you've got an alligator over there, which is a bench, and, you know, for the little kids, starting to give them. And around this will be a fence, and on the fence will be panels describing some of these things, or some histories for the older kids or parents who can learn some of the history. Because we don't want to make this just for the kids, everybody needs to learn. So as we walk and follow the footprints through the Everglades, we go through the Everglades Experience. Then we come to the Florida Citrus Groves and the Hammocks. And if you can tell, you know, they're play equipment, so, but they represent the citrus trees with the oranges and grapefruits, and you have a tent to play on and some cypress stumps to jump across, uh, so you're walking through that. And then as you follow the footprints around, you come to Flagler's East Coast Railroad. That was the first railroad that came through Florida, which really developed Florida. Without the railroad, Florida wouldn't have developed, it was the way people got in and out. Um, so you have a chance to play on Flagler's Train. And as you follow it around, you come to, back to the ocean. So you follow through the Everglades, through this, through the town, and then out to back to the beach. And as you go through the beach, you have these play equipment, dolphins and sharks and other play equipment that are, you find in the ocean. And then as you walk around, you come to the shipwreck, the Providenceia and the Kokimba, Kokimba. I can never say those right. So those are shipwrecks that are right off our coast that we have pictures of. So we wanted, now, we couldn't create a shipwreck itself, we had to pick equipment that was already designed, so we picked one as close as we could to what the ships look like, but that's what we're going to call them. So kids learn, and then around these will be other experiences. We're hoping to have a sponsor pick up a, a little treasure hunt area, where they can come and actually dig in the sand and find the blooms that'll have the Children's Mu... Children's Schoolhouse Museum logo on them, you know, where you can go, and maybe you go trade them in for a prize or something, you know, stuff like that. We're going to have these kind of adventures as you go through. This is a great piece for, for kids from zero to five to play on. It's very interactive, a lot of things to climb, jump, crawl under, so we think that's going to be, and underneath, of course, is the ocean and the waves showing the shipwreck. So that's another view of it from the height, um, and again, we put some shade over it, so, you know, it's not in full sunlight, again, trying to make it safe at the same time as fun and learning. So then we come to the Tomato and Eggplant Garden Swings. Yeah, that's a little corny maybe, but again, it represents the farming, and we wanted a swing. So again, these swings are very inclusive, we've got the toddler swings, and we've got the, the older kids' swings, so everybody can use these swings. So then, as we follow the footprints, we're going to follow the footprints behind the Cultural Center, down the sidewalk, and we're going to go into the five to 12-year-old area. And you're going to follow those footprints down the beach, and you're going to experience Florida going down the beach. So again, that's just another view, see the footprints coming in and going down the beach, and you can see the size of this equipment. And you can see the size of this equipment. This is fairly large equipment to play on. And all of this equipment is really unique to Boynton. It really tells the Boynton story. So, we're going to go through these. The first thing is, is we got the Miami Blue Butterfly and Wetland area. So, you see the butterfly. That's a big piece of equipment to play on. And that's going to be, I think this is going to be crowded all the time, because that has all kinds of things to do, swinging from, jumping from, climbing on, climbing underneath, and anything you want to do. But again, you're going to understand the butterflies of Florida, the uniqueness of some of the endangered butterflies we have in Boynton Beach. And along with this, we will have the butterfly gardens there with the real butterflies in them. So, not only will they play, they'll be able to experience it. Again, another shot. And behind there, we have the Everglades. So, that's the Everglades, that's the sawgrass and everything else that you find in the Everglades. And it's not enough just to see it. You also want to be able to play on. And you see, these are climbing trees. You know, a lot of kids that live in the city, there's not trees to climb on. Besides that, most parents don't let their kids climb trees. But here, we want them to climb the tree. Now, it's the sawgrass in the Everglades, but you can still climb them. And as you see, you can get pretty high up. So, we think the kids are really going to enjoy this. I want to go back to this. The other thing you see as you walk through here, and I'll show you another fact, is we have these creatures coming out of the ground. There, you see the big snake in the Everglades. Earlier on, there was an alligator coming off the beach and into the Everglades that you can play on. And these are all 3D features that are coming out of the park to actually add to the experience. So, moving on, we come to our fishing arena and jellyfish slide. So, we tried to, we found this piece of equipment, and we really love the equipment. It's perfect. And then, we said, "Well, how does it fit into our history?" And it really does. If you start looking at it very closely and using your imagination, as a kid would use their imagination, you can kind of see the fishing theme in that piece of equipment and a tuna tower. You know, that's something we're looking at. And then, next to it is basically a big jellyfish slide. So, that's our boat tower here in our marina with a slide, and it's out next to the beach, so it's where the boats will be. And you see out there also, we put some spinning equipment and things like that around it, because kids love to spin and play and jump on things. I think I went too fast. Again, there's another shot. And again, you see the turtle out there. These are 3D animals out in the surface that kids can play on. Moving on, there's the jellyfish slide. Again, you can climb up in it. You can crawl up the outside, the inside, come up inside it, slide down, you're inside the cage. So, we think that's very unique to Boynton. And again, it fits our oceanfront-type inspiration we were trying to get to. And again, another shot of that, seeing how kids are using it and playing on it. And again, we have these spinners that you stand on and spin around. This is one of our favorite pieces. This is called the Supernova, and it's the hurricane of 1928. But what it is, is you stand on it, and it actually spins. And you can run up the hill, and it'll keep spinning, so you can run in place. This is our most, this is not unique to this park, because we have one of these in another park, and it's the most, yeah, Ocean Marina, it's the most-used piece we have probably in the park. So, we wanted to get that in there, because we know it'll be used. And again, it's exercise, and it's, you know, when you have your seven, eight-year-olds, it's nice to wear them out before they go home. Anyways, and then, as we walk through, we also wanted to put in some things for adults. So, we put in this exercise circuit for outdoor equipment. And as you can see in this picture, one of the things we tried to do is make sure parents could actually, and this is looking over the five-to-12-year-old. We also want them, they can play on the playground, and the parents can get a little bit of exercise and see their kids. Because one of the keys is security and making sure you're watching your kids and you can see your kids. So, you'll be able to do this whole circuit and see the entire playground. So, we think that's pretty neat, so parents actually have something to do while their kids are playing. And, you know, if they want to sit on the bench and watch, that's perfectly fine. If they want to get a little exercise, we'll provide it for them. And again, we have these chest press horizontal rows, and there's three pieces, and they do multiple different things for exercise. So, what are our next steps? So, today, on today's agenda, the reason I wanted to bring this to you is, we have a budget amendment, because we have to pay for this playground. And we're doing, it's in our CIP budget. We're just amending the CIP budget to cover the cost. There's also an approval of this equipment purchase. We're buying the purchase directly, because we get bigger discounts when we buy it directly, so we're getting a really good deal. Then, we need to finalize the installation and design drawings. And then, one of the big things working on is working on these sponsorships to assist with the funding. It's really companies that want to come in, and maybe they'll do an exhibit and they'll sponsor the play equipment and the park. That's why we're trying to make it unique. We think companies will be really interested. We already have some interest. We've talked to some, and they're excited about it. They're excited about coming in, sponsoring it, providing some funding, putting up these live exhibits. We want growing exhibits for tomatoes and pineapples and things like that. We want maybe a sugarcane exhibit, where we're growing sugarcane, where kids can actually take some sugarcane with them, and they can learn how it's pressed and all that. They can take fresh fruit. All this would be in association with the Children's Schoolhouse Museum, so they could do their education while they're doing that. So, these are all the exhibits we want to add to keep this area fresh. And these things can be changed out as we go. So, that's our next step, is to really keep growing those sponsorships. And so, with that, I'll take any questions.
Yes, Commissioner Pinziger, would you like to begin?
Yes. Colin, that was wonderful. I am so excited for this. Now, I was just at Tampa not too long ago, and I don't know if anybody in the CRAs here, but, you know, I went to their playground, something like this. It's beautiful. It's practically art, especially that butterfly, just amazing. Now, what would this look like in the nighttime? Does any of this light up? Or what, can you talk about the lighting?
Yeah, so there is lighting on all of these parks.
People still come through and people walking around?
Absolutely. So, all of these parks are lit at night. We do have color-changing lighting in different areas, not everywhere, because you don't want to do it everywhere. You have to kind of, it's designed by a professional, not me. I didn't design it. I'm not the professional, but it was designed by a professional. But yes, they're all lit, and the playgrounds will be open, and the play areas will be open as long as the park is open. And we don't have those hours set yet, but probably 10 weekdays and 11 weekends or something like that. That's what we're thinking. Because remember, this is a whole act of downtown. This is just a piece of it to keep families, it's a place for families to go and really enjoy each other's company outside, which is really important. You know, we also have the town green and the amphitheater and all that. Things could be going on there also at the same time. So, this is just part of it. But yeah, the plan is to keep it open and keep it lit. And yes, a lot of this is lit up like artwork. So, we do get that view. Now, remember, there's artwork also around this park. There's other pieces of art that are going in around this park area. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Colin, you know, I might have missed it, but tell me who worked on this project?
So, this started with workshops with the public, and then, the designers are comping.
Okay, stop right there. Who served from the public?
It was anybody who came. It was open to the public. So, we had two workshops. One was attended with about, I think...
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five people or so. And the second one was a little bit smaller. We did one at, didn't we do it at Sarah Sims?
Yeah.
So, we did one at Sarah Sims, which may have been a little bit smaller. But what we did is, we asked them for their input. What do they want to see? And these are some of the ideas that we got. And we, from the original design to now, we've made changes based on those input from the public we've gotten. I've also gotten probably 100 or so emails from different people in the public. The main designers, comping, they did the design work, and they did a wonderful job designing it and laying it out based on our vision, so.
Right. Those workshops, you had a sign-in sheet?
Uh, I believe we did. They were, this was about a year and a half ago when we did them. A year and a half. This was at the beginning of the project.
Still a year and a half ago, did you have a sign-in?
Yes, I'm pretty sure we did have a sign-in sheet.
You had a sign-in sheet, you know, I like to see who served on that. I'm just saying, I need to make sure that we had a cross-section from this community.
Right.
Thank you if you can get me those copies. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, I just wanted to applaud staff and whoever they work with from the private sector on this. I remember being at one of those events, and it was just kind of an advertised community event, and I actually spoke at it, and Susan and a large number of other people were there. At least the one that was out at the library that I attended was more attended than any other community meeting I typically went to. So, you had a diverse set of opinions from people who helped build the original playground to children who were there who obviously have the craziest and probably most interesting ideas that are probably the most fun. But I'm just happy that you paid homage to historic activity in the city and that you made an effort to ensure that there was, I talk about it anytime we talk about anything town square, is just something to do with the ocean or nautical stuff, because that just, it just looks nice in a downtown, the colors and the vibrancy. And I think if I had kids, I'm sure they would enjoy this, and I might be too old for all of these various zones, but...
Very soon. I don't know. You might enjoy it. You might like it.
I'll check it out before it goes active and get some enjoyment out of it. But I'm just, I like it a lot. I think especially the inclusion of sensory playground equipment, which is obviously a more modern phenomenon and an acknowledgement that it's not just about going and jumping around for the sake of it, that there are things that can be learned or activities that can enrich a child's life that go beyond just, you know, playing on a swing or a monkey bar when there's just metal bars around. So, I just think it was a good effort, and I'm excited to see it. And the complementary to this will be the giant green space across Ocean Avenue next to City Hall. So, I appreciate everything. I'll wrap it up with that.
Commissioner Romulus.
And as, I believe the only commissioner for now that has children up here, I'm very excited about this. And I can tell you one thing, my six- and three-year-old will be, you know, they're going to be over the moon about this. And, you know, I did attend one of those workshops, and I remember one of the things that most of the parents were saying was that they wanted something that allowed them to visibly see their children, because that was one of the issues that we had with the castle. I forget the name. Is that what it's called? Was it Kids Kingdom? Right. That was one of the issues where the kids would kind of get in there, and, you know, I had the same issue where my kids would go in there, and I would lose them for a couple of seconds, because I didn't know where they were inside of those things. It was kind of cool for them, but for me, it kind of panicked me a little bit when I couldn't see them for a few seconds. But, you know, this is fantastic, and it definitely takes into account what some of those parents were concerned about, just visibility and seeing their children and the safety aspect, but still allowing them to have fun. And, you know, of course, as an educator, I, you know, right there with Vice Mayor Katz, when you can put some education into the fun as well, you got me. So, good job.
All right. I'd just like to say that I'm glad it's Family Friendly Farming Fishing City.
There you go. We got it all. We got it all.
All right. Is there anything? Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, one more question. So, I know in one of the parks we just reopened, Sims Park, we made sure to have security measures, you know, to protect the integrity of equipment or the design, because, you know, the news last week, somebody in West Palm, or two people in West Palm, went up to Sand Castle and just climbed all over it and destroyed it and caused thousands of dollars' worth of damage to that. What are the security or cameras or surveillance? Just so if somebody goes here and ruins it, which inevitably, somebody will do something foolish and go there and mess around, what do we have to ensure that people are deterred from doing that?
Right. Well, you know, the chief had gone over, the police chief had gone over the full security for town square. This is part of that. This, all of this equipment and all of these areas are fully covered by cameras, full surveillance, full lighting. Lighting, even when the park is closed, the lighting is on sensors, so it'll brighten up if somebody walks in when they're not supposed to be there. Of course, we're also going to have the ambassadors, you know, some security people down there to watch it during, when it is open. So, the big thing for us is the entire public area of town square is covered with video surveillance. So, and it's very good, high-level video surveillance, so. Yes, people will try to do bad things. Our job is to try to prevent that by putting measures in, and people say, "You know what? This is not a place worth doing it." And that's what we're really trying to do, is just keep it from happening by providing to make sure people know that you are being, you can be seen. We know what you're doing.
And I'd suggest, I know with the red light cameras, our police department does a great job of putting that on social media to highlight the fact that people are doing this dangerous activity, that whether it's this park or any other park where we have surveillance, I would suggest that police use social media to make people aware that we have this surveillance. And if you do it, you're going to look stupid, and you're probably going to get caught, and you should just not ruin the fun for the families.
Right, exactly. And that's the whole point of the security system we're putting in.
All right.
I'll add one more thing, just looking at the overall layout. You know, I also want to thank you guys in terms of thinking, safety-wise, where the parks are located and how they're away from some of the main road activities and traffic activities. So, again, as a parent, that's something that's very important to me, and they're blocked off by other major things that would prevent somebody from trying to do anything that could hurt the children.
And they're also fenced with low fencing, so the kids can't get out of it without crawling over something. So, you really know they're confined in an area. So, we're trying to pay attention to all of those things. I mean, you're right. When the parents came out and talked to us about what they wanted, these are all the things that they wanted to make sure were included in there. So, we've included a lot of that in there to make sure it's very safe, and people really can have a good time.
Very good. Thank you.
So, I think, I was going to let John just talk for, he needs a minute, so I'm going to let him give an update on the private side of the vote.
For the record, John Markey, private sector developer. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. First of all, I'd like to just compliment Colin's staff and the manufacturers on this. I'm a proud grandpa, so I'm very excited about this. And, you know, I had the privilege of working a little bit with the manufacturers, designers, really impressive designers. And I just have to say, I've never seen anything like this. And I think that it not only is experiential and it's the way it relates for children, but it ties to the essence of Boynton, and I think that really speaks to the nature of this project. In terms of the private sector, I don't have a whole lot of new news for you, other than what I briefed you on last time. Always a pleasure to be here and speak to and address the commission. The biggest thing that I think I have to tell you is that we have been working on, as I've told you before, on accelerating delivery of the North Garage, which I think is, as I've told you before, very essential to the overall success of the project. So, I've been working with staff, my team has been working with staff for a while on some different alternatives that I know that they plan on presenting to you soon. As part of that, we've come to the conclusion that we need to refinance our mortgage, because the City National Bank mortgage currently encumbers the property under the garage. So, we've worked hard on that, and we should be closing that Thursday, this Thursday. So, what that does is that removes that mortgage encumbrance from the land that the garage sits on, the North Garage. So, we'll be able to do whatever it is we decide is the best alternative without having to worry about getting a release of that mortgage. So, we've been working on that. That should be done. As I said, we should close that on Thursday. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of changes. Any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Just one.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, one of the questions I'd asked at previous meeting was just when the financing on the south side parking garage and residential, um, was going to be secured? And I think you said that was forthcoming and within, within weeks of the last time we asked, has that been secured or is there a date certain?
I, I think that this closing is, this coming Thursday is, is a, a large part of that. We've gotten a commitment to close on the value of the, the land to free up the mortgage on, uh, the garage or the encumbrance of the mortgage on the garage. So part of that is they've also committed to finance the, uh, south garage and south building through a mortgage modification, same setup as we had with City National Bank.
So are the timelines for their construction and completion of the south garage for the city hall and library, is that still on track?
It is, it is. And as Colin mentioned, you mentioned the city hall and library, that's slightly ahead of schedule.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And so our next is my presentation. Um, do we have a clicker or is it up? Here's a picture of San Antonio, where in the background you can see the Hemisphere Park, the arena, uh, the tall buildings are the, the different hotels and the convention center that is there. Next slide. National League of Cities Summit, the conference provides education for leadership, development, meaningful discussions on common local level problems and new best practices to address the trends affecting cities. So that is thereabout, and the way they do this is through mobile workshops, conference workshops and general sessions. Next slide. My first mobile workshop was, is Morgan's Wonderland. Uh, I was able to view the, the butterfly playground, their century village, uh, wharf, and it was just fascinating to see what we're doing in our town, downtown that is going to be free for everybody is kind of the theme park quality that is over there. And it's just exciting to see, um, that we are making sure that everyone is able to use and be a part of the city of Boynton Beach. Next slide.
Explain the hands with the butterfly, did they explain that to you all?
Yes, so the, the aspect of a butterfly is that it starts with a caterpillar and through metamorphosis is able to transfer into, uh, an insect with flight for once that could only just crawl on the ground. And so that's kind of where, uh, we're trying to change the idea of someone who has special needs that they are able to be their best selves with some time and effort.
I'm asking questions to help you hurry up.
Yeah, no. So this is, yes.
That was very profound.
Thank you.
That was very nice.
Yeah, I, I'm learning things.
Slightly impressed.
So this is a, a map of the Howard Peak, uh, Greenways Trails. Um, this started back in 2000 when they, I'll read it. So funding for the Greenways was first approved by voters in 2000, followed by three subsequent elections to use one eighth cent from local sales tax revenue to develop the trails. Current funding is be used to expand the trail system and enhance the existing trails. So instead of just keeping the recharge areas for their different, uh, water systems clear, they decided that we need to make it open to the public because the public is paying for it. And so that's something that I'm going to speak about in the, the future agenda is that what do we really want our city to look like, uh, on the, the greenway aspect? Next slide. Next we have the Alamo and Maverick Distillery. I'm sorry, the, the second part didn't get in. Um, so the Alamo is, it was a wonderful tour. Um, right now it is a new partnership between the state and the city of San Antonio, and everyone will tell you that the Alamo is kind of small when in fact it's four acres. So the city of San Antonio is really doing its job saying that it's actually only one out of five missions there, and that was built in the 1700s. And the reason why it was such a good fort is that it didn't have a roof at the time of 1836. It was actually the Army Corps of Engineers that put a roof on it and the iconic, um, front facade that we see. And so with the, the partnership between the city and the state, they're expanding, uh, the museum and moving things around so that it is able, so that the city is able to tell the whole story of that place, not just the battle of 1836. So speaking of the battle of 1836, this is Maverick Distillery, uh, started, named after one of the mavericks who is a descendant of Sam Maverick, who was tasked with going to the neighboring cities of Gilead and Gonzales to get help for the, the frontiersmen over at the Alamo. So that was March 5th when the battle was on March 6th. So he felt so bad that Sam Maverick ended up buying the area around it. His descendants were doctors and so they had the means to rehab this, uh, early 19th, 18th, 19th century, no, late 19th century building to, that was once a bank into a distillery where they include both, uh, brewery and a restaurant, and it's just keeping the history because, you know, they could build a lot taller than the, those three stories, but they're using what they have. And it was very interesting because they claimed to have started the term Maverick, as we know, like Top Gun, um, by saying that Sam Maverick once got a bunch of cattle, uh, for a business deal, but he never branded them. And so when anybody saw a random cow roaming the, the prairie in Texas, they always thought that that was a Maverick. And so I thought that was interesting because they did what they wanted to do. Uh, next to this workshop that I felt was, uh, very important, uh, was Communities for All Generations. Uh, they had three different, they had about eight different sections. I was able to go to three different tables, education and career development, um, next level youth opportunity. So they are different federal and non-profit, state and national nonprofits that are able to help with, uh, career development in our youth. And that is something that I learned on the, the second aspect of it, financial literacy, that there is nonprofit for the Cities for Financial Empowerment and the Community Action Agency. One of the things that we don't really have in Boynton Beach is, uh, Youth Empowerment Center or Youth Opportunity Center that I think that we need to look in and focus on because we want to make sure that we're not just going from zero to five and from five to 12, that we are actually thinking about our, uh, youths that are from 13 to 24. Um, and so we actually have in Palm Beach County, a community action agency that has locations in West Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, Lake Worth Beach and Belle Glade. And so it was news to the city manager, and so I think I'd like to ask our economic development team to get a report of what, uh, the Community Action Agency of Palm Beach County does and how we can work with them in Boynton Beach. Uh, and the next thing is independent financial counseling. Uh, one of the workshops was talking about, um, uh, monthly deposits for minors so that they get into the habit of saving on a monthly basis, whether it be a dollar or two dollars, just so that they have that aspect and have the ability to grow. Um, I've spoken with Ricky Petty at Healthier Boynton Beach to try to bring, uh, financial literacy, uh, professionals, um, working with the city so that we can inform and educate our public for the, the people over 18 about financial literacy. The last is partner with health providers. We have a major hospital, the Baptist Bethesda Health, and so it's working with them and, you know, having our economic development team and Parks and Rest to realize the community health assessment so that we understand what's going on with the health of our residents. You have the WIC programs for women, infant, children to make sure that they are getting the proper nutrition. I feel like we are actually doing a very good job with this with, uh, feeding South Florida and the different distributions. Then they mentioned a program called Family Connects, which I thought was informative. It is how a nurse will go to, um, every person's home who had a newborn just so that they can have a professional there to see what's going on regardless of income. And then having an age friendly commission, I know that we have a senior advisory board, and so maybe tasking them to work with AARP to make recommendations to us so that we have an age friendly, uh, city.
Excuse me, did they give you anything in debt with age friendly commission? I'm just in.
Yes, and so we had AARP as one of our general session sponsors, and so they had a huge program, uh, about, uh, Care to Laugh, about a comedian that talks about being a caregiver. And so AARP has these national programs that we as the city can work with to be more age friendly.
I'm just trying to say, but the age friendly commission, did they have a brochure or anything that applied to their city?
Uh, yes, and I, okay, go to the website and get you something. And so that was just, uh, two days. Now we're at Friday at the convention center. Um, our Friday session was, uh, youth delegate program and youth empowerment center. Um, I think that's something that we need to work with, uh, the different high schools that we have, whether it be Boynton Beach High, South Tech or Quantum High School, um, the Care to Laugh with AARP. I was able to attend the After School Policy Advisors Network, and one of the things that they gave us a brochure on was the summer learning program where it's not really supposed to start in June, it's supposed to start in January so that we have everything in place so that when school ends, the children are still learning and they don't experience the summer slide that I'm sure our vice mayor will talk about, well, knows about. Then I was at different conferences for the financing of affordable housing, just working with the different departments, both the county, state and federal governments, Council on Youth Education Families, uh, new ideas for downtown development, uh, just the importance of the U.S. Census Bureau and that the incoming president who was from Los Angeles and was able to get Mike Love and the Beach Boys to sing at the Friday night convention. So that was unique to, uh, experience the sixties in today's time. Saturday at the convention center, I was able to go in the morning session, Thriving People, The Key to Economic Viability Cities. So this is something that I've been talking about, really investing in our people, uh, not necessarily just the, the industries. Um, the closing session was with Starbucks and City Health where City Health gives an assessment on the top 40 cities by population of how they are doing. We had a conversation with Common, the rapper, because it's very common his name, and his book, Let Love Have the Last Word, and it's kind of a reminder of what we do here as elected officials, elected leaders on the dais that we need to do the things that we do with love. We had the annual business meeting where we had a big delegation from the Florida League of Cities and the closing event over at Hemisphere Park, and that is it. Any questions?
I want to say thank you now, Commissioner Penner, but what did you do? I'm just kidding.
All right, and I thank you again for allowing me, uh, to travel. Uh, I don't think I'll be able to travel too much next year. So we will move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record. Oh, Debbie, ready?
Yeah.
All right, so Debbie, would you like to present? Or Ted? No, there it is. Thank you, um, for your time this evening, commissioners, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, uh, city manager. If I could have, um, just before I get, uh, ask you, Mayor Grant, to come out and present their certificates of completion. What are you doing, Rosie? Do I have the, the three and Teresa Carlos? These three young gentlemen came, um, Teresa, their teacher, asked if we would host them for an internship about technology. Rosie, down. Uh, she's not, she got to know them all too well and apparently she just wants to say hello. Anyway, uh, I, I wanted to come up and thank the city for welcoming them and the different departments. They got to go into human resources and see what they do with technology, and they got to go into recreation and parks and see the technology that keeps that running. Uh, we got to go to, um, the fire department. I think that was pretty amazing. I had a lot of fun there. But we also went to ITS and then they had some time with Ted where I showed them how assistive technology helps me to do my job. Then we went to the police department and, uh, last to the library, and all of them welcomed us for the time that we, we were there. And I just, it was a wonderful experience for me and I'm sure for all of them. And I think Teresa wanted to say a couple of words.
So, hi, my name's Teresa Trumbull Thomas, and I am, um, honored to have the job of helping students at South Tech Academy find employment experience and gain confidence for a career. I'm so grateful to Ted and Debbie and Stephanie, who's taken pictures, um, for our third IT internship. This is the third year that we've done this, and each year it's grown bigger, more students, more experiences, more, um, participation from each department. And, um, this is also my third year at South Tech working in employment transition with students ages 15 to 22. But the program, which is called Career Opportunities and Related Education, has existed there at South Tech for over 15 years. So it's something that has been building and has been very successful. Um, WBLEs are known as work-based learning experiences. There are pre-employment transition service, which is funded by President Obama's Workforce Innovations and Opportunities Act and managed by the Vocational Rehabilitation Division of the Florida DOE. Every student at South Tech participates in at least one career academy. Um, it's called career technical education, and they are in professional certifications. And for example, of these three gentlemen, all three are Microsoft Office specialists, correct?
Correct.
And have additional various, um, IT certifications, and in addition to that Tristan participated in our music and sound production academy and can mix some music. And Carlos is going to be finishing up as a certified veterinary assistant next semester. So they've got a whole lot going on. It's really exciting and it's fun to be a part of it. Um, the students in our 13 different career technical education academies can choose to participate in up to four work-based learning experiences a year, and so this is one of up to four that these guys will be doing this year. This was Franco's first WBLE, right?
Yes.
This was Carlos's third and Tristan's second. So as they go, they can do more and more each year up until they're age 22. All 75 or maybe more now of our transition students have completed their high school diploma and they opt to continue their education at South Tech Academy. I don't know about you all, but I was a parent of a student with an IEP and I didn't know that that was an option when my daughter was a senior and I got this job. So I like to try to spread that word as often as possible. Um, and they, um, work at local elementary schools, several local restaurants, Jiffy Lube, Ken's Crew at the Home Depot, Publix, Peggy Adams, Big Dog Ranch, Memory Trees, UN NGO has, um, worked with us and other local companies. And for our next trip, we're hoping to create, uh, Odo Cast like they made for the, um, International Kinetic Arts Show here in Boynton Beach. We're trying to make one of those for the historical preservation walking tour downtown. But just so you know, the city of Boynton Beach is the only local municipality that has worked with us so far to create a community work-based learning experience and help our students explore the diverse ways they can use their IT certifications in a future career. And we're hoping to expand on that and do other departments as well, other CTEs. So this experience required a lot of planning, coordination and communication, and Ted made that look easy. And since that's what my job is, I know that it wasn't easy, so thank you so much. We're so grateful.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. And today he emailed me and asked me what he could have done to make it better, and I genuinely couldn't think of one thing, but I told him if I could think of anything, I would let him know. So thank you.
So what is it?
I can't think of anything. I honestly can't. It gets better each time and we're so appreciative. So, um, just wanted to say thanks to everybody and, um, thank you all for listening. And if you own a business or you're an employee at a business and you'd like to host a student from South Tech, I will leave my cards outside on the, on the table. And, um, I think Tristan wanted to say a little something. If that's okay.
Okay, I don't want to be too close to the microphone. All right, the, um, past eight weeks I've been in this internship, uh, they've been really fascinating, uh, you know, from spicing up, uh, some PowerPoints that I thought were a little too, what was the word I used?
Bland.
All the way to, uh, Ted teaching me how to read and write Braille, which I'm still not good at, but I'm working on it. Uh, I will say though, I don't recommend telling the person who is presenting a PowerPoint to change some stuff in their PowerPoint, especially if they're in a higher position than you. I just got lucky when I said it. And only really one problem I ever had with this whole internship thing was, uh, I would be driving to where the city is temporary, city hall is temporarily located, and every time my GPS said turn left, I would always miss the turn. So it shows you how good I am at directions. I just, uh, with that said, I'd just like to thank Ms. Teresa, Mr. Ted for making this all happen, uh, Carlos and Franco for making me not do this alone. And, uh, my grandmother, who was the only, uh, family member that was available to come. Uh, yeah, a lot of, a lot of stuff goes on in my family. Anyway, thank you. I'll be here till 8:30 if you have any other requests for jokes.
Individual speakers will be limited to three minute presentations, please.
Public audience.
Public audience, what did I say?
Reading it, it's okay, keep going.
Okay, public audience, individual speakers will be led, limited to three minute presentations. Um, please state your name and address for the record. If you'd like to speak on a item that is a part of the consent agenda, please state so now.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. First of all, I want to say I was quite surprised, thank you Colin, for that wonderful presentation on the park. Um, I was wondering why everyone kept asking me if I was going to be at the meeting this week, so now I understand why. And thank you for especially remembering the Miami Blue Butterfly that I'm always advocating for. Um, just a quick little bit of information and I will pass this out. Um, here you go. Um, I had started this a couple of months, I guess quite a while ago, and I, I'm glad I brought it with me tonight because it's turning out to be fortuitous. Um, just to give you the heads up, Charlie Pierce, that a lot of this is based around this park, was the first one to homestead Boynton Beach. There was one other person at the same time, but I'm not fighting that family's fight. They can come in and fight their own, they've all left Boynton Beach. Um, he was the first postmaster, the first bank president. He was the first great Floridian for Boynton Beach. His sister is the first, um, woman in the Hall of Fame for Boynton Beach as well. Um, his son was the first child born in the city limits of Boynton Beach, and this is just a little bit of the info I've been able to find. I haven't been able to access the paperwork that shows, um, when he, he used to own the property that was the park next to the city, the civic center. And that I haven't been able to find. That's I guess going to be my Christmas break project. But thank you Colin, I, I appreciate that very much, and I hope some of this information helps get this out for you. Um, second, I want to say yay, Ferindla is finally our sister city. Um, all of you got a gift from our sister city. I left it up on your desk. You've got, um, Ferindla cheese that they're famous for. They make a one of a kind cheese that no one else makes on the planet. And they also make, um, honey, so I've shared that with you. They eat their honey on their cheese, and I know I gave you a piece of mine from back over the summer, but now you get a whole big piece that's all just for you. So I hope you enjoy it. Um, I've been in touch with Chaney Brothers and they are hopefully, fingers crossed, going to be distributing these products soon in our area. So keep an eye out for that. I've also given you a postcard of Ferindla. There are more of them up here on the counter, and I would like to take a moment to say thank you to the people who helped so much. Um, Steve Anton that spent a day teaching everyone how to snorkel and swim, because several of them didn't know how to swim. They live on a mountain, so it's understandable. Debbie Coles Debe, um, Stephanie Soplop, who was just, couldn't have done anything we did without her, thank you very much. And Wally Majors, of course. And thank you for your time, and I think I made it with a couple of seconds to spare. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more public audience? Yes.
Hi there, Christian Irnuth, um, Ocean Ridge. I'm just here to thank you for putting the agenda item R19161 that opposes offshore drilling activities, including seismic air gun blasting. It means a lot and it means, it means a great deal for protecting our Atlantic coast.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How are you?
Um, Mike Schrempke, I live at 433 Southwest Second Avenue. Um, got a whole list of stuff, I'll try to keep my calm tonight. Um, first of all, do you know if Boynton received any FEMA money for the last hurricane?
Um, we can get you back that answer, yes.
Okay, because there's a lot of blue tarps in my neighborhood and I didn't even lose power, so I'd assume there's probably some fraud there.
Thank you, Christina Romulus, for letting all the illegals live in single-family residents with 12 different last names per household. I appreciate the credit you're giving me for all the great things happening in Boynton Beach. Of course, it's a team effort, so I can't take all the credit, it's not my fault, although I never knew I had such a big fan. I'll be sure to continue to work hard for the next two years to make you proud. Exclamation mark. Oh, it gets better. Thank you for all your hard work. Your idea of mine and clean are very different, obviously. Boynton is now a wasteland. You're amazing. Michael, if you have an issue with trash, go to Adam Temple and Andrew Mack for your best resource. I've copied them as email. Thank you for your endless compliments. I know I'm amazing. Exclamation mark, winky face. Is that professional?
So I might be able to respond to that. You have valid concerns, many of your emails are riddled with expletives.
I have, I have people that have been arrested for being on my property that are illegal.
We, I'm acknowledging your concerns, but I'm also pointing out that you're writing emails to elected officials where the subject line is filled with curse words and there's nothing else in them.
Curse words? What was the curse word?
A sarcastic response.
What was the curse word? What was the curse word?
There are four letters and I'm not going to say them because that was.
What was it? I don't, I don't see a curse word.
In every email I ever got from you, there were curse words.
Hey, name one.
Excuse me, Michael?
Name it.
In public records requesting them, I guarantee you'll find them.
Do you also know about the Sunshine Act that you shouldn't be calling the inspectors and people in town? Is it Justin Katz? You know what that is?
Katz.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I don't exist.
Sir, your time is up.
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no more public audience, we're going to move on to Item 9C.
Hold on.
We got two more? Thank you.
My name's John Passanesee, Southwest 25th Avenue in Boynton Beach. Besides everything that Michael's emails to you guys and stuff, is there a reason why that that garbage is not picked up? Do you guys have any answers for that? I mean, don't you have a trash pickup once a week like most of the neighbors and neighborhoods in the city? Like come with a claw truck and pick up the garbage? It just sits there.
If you, if you hang around later in the meeting, there's actually an agenda item that amends the way that we do dispose of trash that has been placed out of order, meaning not in the appropriate disposal fashion, where there will be a fine, a service fine basically assessed to them, that we will take it, charge the residents immediately, and that will cover the cost to the city. Whereas right now, when people do it, there is not a procedure akin to what we're going to pass later in this meeting. So that is, in fact, one of the first steps in addressing the concerns that you and your fellow constituents are voicing. So that will literally be happening later tonight.
I do understand that, but you just let it sit there until you charge the people? Don't you pick it up first with the truck and then bill the person that owns the property? It just sits there for months and weeks and weeks and weeks.
Right. They could use it. I don't address things like this, but in District 2, I'm just saying, right after they pick up bulk trash, I'm faint, but the same thing that you all are talking about right after they pick it up, they turn right back around and put out another load, and I get to calling, I'm like saying, you know, it seemed like an endless cycle in District 2 as well, sir. You know, I feel what you all are saying, you know, it's not happening only in your district, it's happening in mine as well. And I'm just saying, I tell Public Works, I'm just saying, time you all put it, pick it up on Friday, they clean up on Saturday, and then Monday, Saturday and Sunday, the rest of the week, we got to look at it, sofas and everything else, and I feel like you all, I'm tired too, but you know, hopefully what we do tonight will help.
Well, I do understand and appreciate that, and I feel for you, but that is part of running a city. You know, I mean, you do have that. It should never sit there longer than a week. You know, with all the other communities, that's what they do, and bill appropriately. But, I mean, it's just, I know it's a vicious cycle, but you just need it.
So the city is aware of this? I do agree with you, it's been taking too long, and we finally have the agenda item tonight to make the change. We had to change our ordinance, so we started it last month, and so we can have that discussion to clarify what the ordinance is and how our city's sanitation department and Public Works Department is going to be working with our community standards department so that if someone has a bulk trash pickup day on Friday and they leave it on Wednesday, that hopefully they will be cited on Thursday.
Yeah, correct. You used to have a guy, Jeff, that used to go around, when they changed in my neighborhood for 25 years, they picked up on Tuesday. They changed it to a Friday. Well, I didn't realize that. Immediately I got a spray paint, you know, pitcher, put on my mail, you know, just a little warning, it was fine, you know, understandably, I apologized and didn't do it again. But, you know, this is going on and on and on, but thank you so much for listening.
Good evening, Council.
Can you move the microphone up a little bit? You're a little bit taller.
Sure. Good evening, Council. My name is Jake Aaron. I live on 132 Southeast 12th Avenue. I was born at Bethesda. My family's had a business here since 1978. It's Creative Metal Products, it's on Southeast 1st Street. I have to be careful on what I say because I've come to another city meeting, and after that, I started getting fines to my house. And I started getting, I have a cooler in my front yard, I have a camper, other things. There's a lot that's going on that's not said because I feel like there's not people that are actually walking on the streets in Boynton. They're not actually in the community. There's also people here tonight that don't want to come and speak up because they don't feel safe, because maybe they've called the police a couple times and nothing has happened, or their neighbors keep coming back and threatening them. One of them happens to be an 80-year-old woman, which hurts me to have to go see her because it's wrong. The trash, I understand, the streets, it's, there's a lot going on. What also worries me is the plans for Southeast 1st Street. When it first came out, there was a median, there was two lanes and sidewalks, which would put my family's business out because we can't get semis in. I understand that Council or the city wants to feed the main vein from Wilbright through 1st Street into Town Hall, but my family's been there for over 30 years, and we're zoned M1, which is the heaviest zoning in Boynton other than industrial. I don't feel like there's a lot of communication with the city and the businesses on that aspect. The other aspect on the safety needs to be addressed too. Like I said, it's hard for me to want to speak up because not only can come after our business and come after my house. So with 52 seconds on there, I don't really talk publicly, I don't really, if you know me, you know me, if you know my family, you do. We give anybody the shirt off our back, but I feel like there's a lot more going on than meets the eye.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Linda Milcarick. I live at 438 Southwest 2nd Avenue, Boynton. For a long time, I'm Mike's neighbor. God bless him. I want to, I was at the meeting and several of us were at the church on 6th Avenue because we've really been struggling with the flow of traffic, how fast they drive. On 2nd Avenue, it's just impossible. There are literally two stop signs on a road that goes from Seacrest all the way up to I-95, and they drive like that. And if they stop at the stop sign, it's amazing, but it isn't all the time. When we looked at the plans, I really loved the meeting, I loved what I was seeing happening, but when we looked at the plans, at least for now, they're not really doing anything on, on Southwest 2nd Avenue. We counted 11 people at that meeting from our street because we're so concerned as to what's going on. I, you know how you cut your grass and you cut the grass and you turn and you come back around? I have to be so careful because, God forbid, I go out on the road to turn around with my push mower when I'm cutting the grass because somebody's going to run me over. When I take the garbage can out, I make sure that I sort of turn it and get my body so that I don't turn my body onto the road and around like you normally would because someone is going to run me over. All right? This is not right. This is not right. And I've addressed this with you all before, but looking at the plans for what they're going to do, they're not addressing where we are, and we're worried, we're scared. When I spoke to, we had an incident right next door a couple of days ago that Mike reported and helped us. When I spoke to the policemen, who were wonderful, they were like, get cameras. Going, I'm a school teacher, so I come home, 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, get cameras, come in the house, shut the door, don't go out again. Really? Really? 30 years in that house. And, and, and I was born and raised on 13th Avenue, so I've been here 63 years. It's frightening. It's frightening, and it's not fair to us. Okay, please, thank you.
Colin? Can you just give a brief update in terms of what's going on with the Phase 2 project and how does that affect, or how does that at least mitigate the issues that we are facing in those corridors on 13th, on 2nd, on 1st in terms of speeding? I know we talked about doing some things to mitigate speeding and helping with that. Where are we on that in the project?
So, yes, so the meeting, we, we had the meeting la, I think it was last week, maybe the week before, no, it was the week before, with the Neighborhood Association to talk about the traffic calming. We brought them the preliminary study, and what we were asking for was input from the public on, you know, did we hit the right spots, did we not? We got a lot of really good comments, we're going back and adjusting the plans. So the answer is, is yes, we have a concept plan of where to place traffic calming devices, how to do it. The first phase of that is we're going to be putting out some temporary devices. We're going to put in some lane narrowing devices that slow people down, we're going to be putting in some traffic humps to slow people down, we're going to be doing some things with some stop signs. So we have a, what you do is we did the traffic counts and all the studies. Now we're going to put out these temporary measures in certain locations and see if it changes the traffic patterns and the behavior. The ones that work, then will be, then will be put throughout the neighborhood where they're needed. The ones that don't work, we don't want to use. So let me give you an example, if a speed bump doesn't slow people down, then let's not put them in. But if it does slow people down, we need to pick the right place. So we got a lot of great comments from the meeting, 2nd Avenue was one of them that we're going to look at. We offered, they were concept plans, just these are some ideas of where we think there's problems, we want to hear. We've heard, we've taken those comments in, and we're going to be bringing back that information to the residents as we develop it. So we promise to come back a couple more times and present that to the residents. So that's the traffic calming part of it. The project part of it is we are proceeding, yes, it's taking a long time, I agree, it's a very slow project, it could have been done faster, but they're not over their time limit allowed to build, so they're, they're within their contract to build the way to building it. They are slowly getting it finished. A lot of the sidewalks have been poured, most of the driveways are finished, almost all of the underground is in, they're, and they're working on the swales and the grassing and the right of way, and then they'll move to paving. So we're getting close. It's, I'm thinking it's, the deadline is, what, March? March finish timeframe? March and April finish timeframe is when they'll be finished? I had to look at Joe because I couldn't remember the exact date, but, so it's moving along, but the traffic calming is a separate project, and that came out of actually the meetings with the public out there, that they said, there, there's a lot of problems. So we're going to work with PD and ourselves, and we're going to come up with the solutions that work, pilot test them, see which ones work the best, and then implement those out in the field.
So when you're, when you're talking about traffic calming, I know we mentioned 2nd, that was mentioned by the speaker, but you also have to count for 13th on.
Oh, absolutely. Every street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Every street between, we're looking at the whole neighborhood between Boynton Beach Boulevard, Wilbright, I-95, and the railroad track. And we did the studies and all that to see, what we did is we did studies, know where people are speeding, where people are driving, you know, where speeding is occurring, where people are running stop signs, what the traffic counts are on certain roads, and that's what kind of dictates where you want to put things. And again, what I told the residents, and I'll tell everybody, we, we can't, we can't necessarily stop bad people, we can try to catch them and we can try to put things in their way so it precludes them from doing the bad things that they want to do driving their car. But it's hard to stop a bad driver. Driver wants to be a bad driver, they're going to be a bad driver. But if we can put things out there that try to correct that driving, we will do it, and that'll hopefully correct most of it. So that's our goal.
I see the city manager speaking with Jason in the back, but if staff could also reach out to him and.
And I, and I will.
On 1st, that would be important, thank you.
Absolutely, and his comment on 1st, yes, we, we took the plans to him, and again, they were concept plans. We got all the feedback. We've heard the feedback from the businesses, and we're going to adjust plans to address some of these businesses. Some of them, yes, will have to make some changes in the way they park because they're using right of way, and we have to recover some of that, but no, we're going to work with them so we don't interrupt the businesses. That's the purpose of doing our public meetings. We do public meetings and then we get the comments, and then we address those comments, and then we go back to them and says, here's what we did. So we will be addressing those.
I see you shaking your head, but just communicate with him and then you can talk to me via email if there's anything else that we need to follow up on.
And Colin, will we have the final approval for those plans?
Yeah, it'll be bid, it'll go through our standard process of bidding and all that. You guys have approved.
No, no, before we go out to bid, are we going?
Normally, we do not, don't bring those, those are, yeah, those are really not commission-approved plans, but as always, we always talk to you about it and show it to you to let you guys give you input. You have already approved the grant applicant, remember, this is a grant project.
Correct, with the TPA to make it more of a complete street to add the sidewalks.
Now, I don't say, we don't bring them for approval, that doesn't mean you won't see them. It's just, our process doesn't include.
But, you know, one of the things that we were talking about is that, you know, this, most, some of the residents did want the dual sidewalk, some of the businesses did not want this dual sidewalk. And so we do have to find that happy medium.
Absolutely.
Where, you know, if people can live with, you know, something, and that's the point, main purpose is, is that we don't want any of the businesses to go out because they've been there for a long time. They were my former neighbors of Creative Metal, and they do a great job. And so that's kind of where I'm at, is that I don't want to approve a plan where the businesses don't like it.
Absolutely, and our job is to address all of their comments. So, yeah. We definitely going to address their issues.
All right.
Hold on, before you go, and in regards to approving plans, I'm the same way because when they did work over in District 2, they messed up Railroad Avenue, and, and I'm, I'm feeling what he's saying because I go there like going to the senior center, and I'm seeing all this construction and trying to get from there to Publix and stuff, and it's a mess back there, and I've been in your place, Creative Metal, and I feel for you. No, well, we need, we need to do something. I'm just saying, you know, just talk, no work is not acceptable, not with me sitting up here either.
Yeah, we need to fix the road and make sure the businesses are successful.
Correct.
Do both of those at the same time.
We're already successful, we just can't go out.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Keep them successful, let them stay in business. Yeah.
All right. We have someone else for public audience?
Yeah, just a couple minutes.
Yep.
My name is Jenna Bradley, I live on Southeast 27th Way in Boynton. I'd also like to express my concern for the speeding that takes place down our street. Not only the speeding, but at night, people park out into the streets and you really have to weave through there. A fire truck could not get through at night. So what would it take to maybe start getting maybe police officers driving through our neighborhoods to help clear the streets? Maybe down by the park where they're all playing basketball and living in the gazebo with their televisions set up till 11, 12 o'clock at night playing music? Numerous cars in the driveways all through that area. But, you know, one of the things that we were talking about is that, you know, this, some of the residents did want the dual sidewalk. Some of the businesses did not want this dual sidewalk. And so, we do have to find that happy medium.
Absolutely.
Where, you know, if people can live with, you know, something, and that's the point, main purpose is, is that we don't want any of the businesses to go out because they've been there for a long time. They were my former neighbors of Creative Metal, and they do a great job. And so, that's kind of where I'm at, is that I don't want to approve a plan where the businesses don't like it.
Absolutely. And our job is to address all of their comments. So, yeah. We definitely are going to address their issues.
All right. Hold on. Before you go, and in regards to approving plans, I'm the same way because when they did work over in District 2, they messed up Railroad Avenue, and I'm feeling what he's saying because I go there like going to the senior center, and I'm seeing all this construction and trying to get from there to Publix and stuff, and it's a mess back there. And I've been in your place, Creative Metal, and I feel for you. No, well, we need to do something. I'm just saying, you know, just talk. No work is not acceptable, and not with me sitting up here either.
Yeah, we need to fix the road and make sure the businesses are successful.
Correct.
Do both of those at the same time.
Roy is successful, he just can't go out. Excuse me.
Keep them successful. Let them stay in business. Yeah.
All right. We have someone else for a public audience?
Yeah, just a couple minutes.
Yep.
My name is Jenna Bradley. I live on Southeast 27th Way in Boynton. I'd also like to express my concern for the speeding that takes place down our street. Not only the speeding, but at night, people park out into the streets, and you really have to weave through there. A fire truck could not get through at night. So, what would it take to maybe start getting maybe police officers driving through our neighborhoods to help clear the streets? Maybe down by the park where they're all playing basketball and living in the gazebo with their televisions set up till 11, 12 o'clock at night, playing music? Numerous cars in the driveways all through that area. Whom do I contact to actually get somebody to go over there and pay attention or maybe clear our street a little bit at night? Remove some of these people's work trucks out of their backyards and make our neighborhood a little bit nicer than it is at this time? Because it's really kind of messy, and we have way too many people living in two-bedroom duplexes. I'm a little not sure who, who do we reach out to? And how many people can live in one dwelling? And how many automobiles are allowed to be parked throughout your yard at night?
So, I know with, you know, in the Southwest community, they have the Forest Park Neighborhood Association. It's not an actual, not a corporate entity, but that is something that I know that some of the communities do, is that they have their group of homeowners that want to have a unified voice to speak with the police department. So, that's something that I may suggest to, for you and your neighbors, is that if you can get together once a month or something at a local church or someone's house so that you can have that unified voice so that when you go to the police department, they're not hearing it 10 times from 10 different people, they can hear it once from 10 people.
So, it's not normal practice that the Boynton Beach Police Department crews through the neighborhoods at night, maybe just to keep things calm or --
So, our police department, through their app, you can get people to do a drive-by if you're out of town, and they will do it maybe once just to make sure that there's nothing going on. But that is something that our police chief is trying to work with our community policing unit. And so, we are trying to have more of that community aspect with our police department. It is in the process right now. He is behind you, so my best guess would be to talk to him as soon as you're done talking with me.
Okay.
So, I was going to say, ma'am, your two best resources are standing right behind you. Those two gentlemen right there, the chief of police and our director of community standards, they're who you're going to talk to for that.
You know, and I know you hear this all the time, but our kids can't even ride their bikes in the streets. And we do have multiple, multiple people living in single homes, and it's not good anymore.
Is there anyone else from public audience? Going once? All right, going twice. Now, we're moving on to --
One more.
One more? All right. Thank you. Almost. That third gavel.
I'm nervous speaking in front of people. My name is Diana Giacomme. I live on Old Boynton, and I'm concerned about the --
Into the microphone a little bit closer.
Sorry. My name is Diana Giacomme. I live on Old Boynton Road, and like them, I'm really scared of the traffic going back and forth. I can't even walk outside to put my garbage before I'm like, the cars are going like 70 miles an hour. I see the police that stop, you know, every now and then, but I wonder if you guys are going to be putting like any road, like the bumps or stop signs or anything.
That is something we'll have to talk with our engineer. I don't believe it is a city road. I believe it is a county road.
Okay.
And so, in order for us to do something, we'd have to go speak with the county. So, I may suggest you speak to your county commissioner.
Okay.
Because they have that road, and it's their duty to not necessarily manage the speeding but to make and maintain it. So, if they put a 30 mile per hour speed limit on it and nobody's doing 30 miles per hour, they need to do some sort of traffic calming mechanism, kind of like what we did in Renaissance Commons Boulevard, where we have speed bumps there because we don't want people driving 40 miles per hour through the residential neighborhood.
Right. And then, you know, as far as like people parking, you know, I have a food truck, so I park in my driveway, and I get fined for that. I don't understand.
So, it is a commercial-built truck in a residential neighborhood, and so, that is against our code.
So, other people, like in the neighborhoods where Mike lives, they can park all of their, like, semis and nobody?
So, if, you know, we do have, the code allows for people who drive trucks. However, we do put the limit on certain types of commercial vehicles. I don't know the exact, but Adam Temple behind you can tell the difference between what food, what commercial vehicles are allowed and what are not, and that's kind of it. You may need to find a different location to store your --
No, I have a storage, but I just like pull up to like load up and then leave. But like, within one hour, I have like the code knocking on my door.
And that's maybe someone calling you, you know, someone reporting you. So, that's a situation that you have where if it's there for an hour, it's something you'd speak to our community standards director.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Going once, going twice. Public audience is now closed for sure. We're moving on to Item 9C. Matt Forrest, our lobbyist from Ballard Partners, to go over our legislative agenda.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners. It's a pleasure to be with you guys here this evening. It seems like I just saw you guys, and I was. I think I was here in September. And not a lot has changed since then. If you remember, I was telling you back in September, we were actually just now ramping up for the start of the legislative session, which will begin in January. So, I do have some couple of things to give you guys some updates on, some notices. And obviously, as we get into this stuff, you also have your proposed legislative agenda, which is always a tough thing to do. I meet with your staff often, and I talk with Lori often, and it's great to be able to, you guys are a fantastic city in that you guys take initiative to establish your legislative agenda. At the same time, Tallahassee is very much an offense and defense-type issue, and it's great to know what your offense is, but you don't know what your defense is until you actually get up there to the session. So, it's really hard to set your priorities, but I applaud your staff for at least taking the initiative to go from there. To give you guys a quick update of where we are, we are going into the last committee week before the session begins next week. So, next week, from Monday to about Thursday afternoon, many legislators, all the legislators will be back in Tallahassee for committee weeks. More bills will be being filed. But of course, then we take a big break. Things kind of go away from Tallahassee for about a month. The session actually begins January 14th. It goes for 60 days. So, it's going to be very much of an intensive 60 days. It's very different than other years where we were, the later time, where we have the session that begins in March because the committee weeks lead right up to it. So, you have committee weeks in January, and then committee weeks in February, and then you go right into March, and you go right into April. So, it's very much the feeling of a 90-day session or even 120-day session because there's not a long gap. With this, it'll be one month completely off, all the holidays, nobody in Tallahassee, and then 60 days for either everything that you want to get across the line or everything that you don't want to get across the line to do that. So, to give you guys a big picture of where we are, one thing that we always push for for the city of Boynton Beach are some appropriation items to try to bring some money back down to the city. These are always, again, a very tough thing, very, very competitive to try to draw money down. The biggest thing with these kind of projects, always think of it as this. I always hear people saying, "Well, what is their money for?" And everyone will say, "Well, you know, whatever they're giving it out for." There's nobody in Tallahassee with a sign out that says, "Here, we have money for this." You have to go up there, make a compelling reason of why the state fund should be used to down in a local community, whether it's an infrastructure project or parks or things like this. You have to find a reason for that compelling state interest. We think we have done that. We've worked a lot with your staff. We have submitted two appropriation requests, one for enhanced pedestrian crossings in the new town square project. We're asking for $75,000, a modest request, to do several high-tech ADA accessible and enhanced pedestrian crossing areas. Your former colleague and now State Representative Joe Casello, who I think might still be in the room there, is sponsoring that legislation for us, and it's off to a great start. In order for a project to be eligible, to be included in the House budget, it must be first heard in a committee. And thanks to the great sponsorship and leadership with Rep. Casello, we've already checked that box. It's already been presented and passed its first committee. I don't expect it to be heard again. The next time we'll finally see it surface is when the House hopefully rolls out their budget in about the third or fourth week of January. But we're off to a great start there. Another project we are pushing for is also infrastructure improvements in the heart of Boynton, stormwater replacement systems. We're asking for $240,000 there to go along with the local funds of about $610,000. Representative Duquette has filed that for us, but we haven't had a chance to get that one heard in committee just yet. Senator Berman, because we, even though the House and Senator do their appropriations differently, is sponsoring both those projects and helping to push those into the House and the Senate budget for us. To give you an idea of just how competitive it is up there, as of today, I looked it up, and there have been 1,408 requests for appropriations filed with the House. You guys have two of them. With more time, I could tell you how many billions of dollars that would all add up to. And what they don't tell you on Schoolhouse Rocks is that most of those little bills die right on the steps. The life expectancy of these projects is not, are not good. So, of those 1,400, a very small percentage of them are going to make it into the budget, and so, we'll do our best to push to make sure they are yours. To give you some hindsight, I'll also, just statistically, last year, there were 1,600 appropriation requests, and right now, we're already sitting with 1,400 going into the session. I think there'll be even more. When it comes to legislation, we are doing, we have some offensive-minded things. It's always very tough to also get a bill across the line. We've worked with the staff to talk about several initiatives. You guys have those in your packet when you look at your legislative agendas. One in particular is we are looking at possible growth management amendments. Things that we're looking into would be an amending legislation on behalf of the town that impacts all towns whenever there's a broad development permit extensions during declarations of emergencies. So, we're looking, we are shopping some language up in Tallahassee about possibly amending that issue that impacts all cities. As of right now, I'm happy to tell you there aren't a lot of, you know, horrible bills out there filed so far for local governments. There is one preemption bill, HB 3, that was filed last year, has been filed again this year, and it would prohibit local governments from imposing or any regulation on businesses or business entities, very much into your licensing for trade groups, electricians, things like that. Some cities have another layer of regulations. That is one bill that has been filed again this year. Last year, it passed the House. It did not pass the Senate. Spoiler alert, it's going to pass the House again. If it passed the House last year, and it was only about nine months ago, trust me, it'll probably pass there again. There is some growth management bills filed. They are very large, very broad. We're still diving into those, exactly how they'll impact the town. And one in particular that is on your agenda and has been filed already, I think you'll see some traction on this, the communication services tax. There is legislation that has been filed in the House and the Senate that would require all local governments to set that at 5% or lower as of September 1st, 2020. So, that I know is an issue we're already talking to the town, to the staff about, to exactly what 5% would mean to your town and as we go into that. It's been filed, has not been heard, but it has been filed in the House and the Senate, and I do think it'll get some traction this year and start moving. Another issue that I do think will come up but hasn't been filed yet is the vacation rental industry, short-term rentals. The issue is still very much highly contested. You have the Airbnbs and VRBOs, the platforms on one side. You have hotels and local governments on the other side of the issue. It is a statewide issue. I know Boynton Beach has issues with it, certain other towns. And really, until the bill comes out and we see exactly where they think they might kind of put the pendulum, how far to the left or how far to the right, then the city will be able to weigh in and decide how it impacts you and your existing ordinances and what you might want to go with that. So, those are kind of the big issues I see coming forward. I think that'll get filed. Of course, a lot will happen in the next month. Most of the significant legislation is going to come out right when the session begins. There'll be committee bills done by leadership in either the House or the Senate. We won't see those till probably the second week in January. This is obviously the worst setting probably to dive into legislation, really, really deep. Things can be complex. Things can be long, and obviously, it's better to sit down, actually read the language, ask questions, get information from your staff. So, I highly recommend, reach out to me, reach out to your staff. We can do a deep dive in any legislation or any bill that you would want. And also, you're going to hear about more of these bills, probably even quicker than I can get them to you. The shelf life of any memo I write to you is very, very short. The amount of time it takes me to write it, by the time I hit send, somebody else has already filed something that changed what I just wrote. So, the alerts that you will get from the League of Cities and things like that are very, very timely. Anything that sparks your curiosity or interest, make sure your staff knows about it, make sure it's on my radar. And it's always easier for me to give you guys a verbal update on where things are. A lot of times, I am in the Capitol nonstop every single minute for about 60 days, so it's much easier to call me on my cell phone than it is for me to get to a computer and write you something intelligently. So, with that said, I'll definitely answer any questions you may have, and of course, look forward to working with you guys over the next 90 days.
So, my question, you know, regarding House Bill 3, would that eliminate our business tax?
I don't believe so. Again, I recommend we do a deeper dive onto the language. Last year, it wasn't the business tax. It's simply certain cities, as it was explained to me, certain cities have extra layers they would put onto certain vocational trades, electricians, AC repair, various other levels. I don't think it was a huge issue, if I remember correctly, from last year, but other cities, it was a major issue.
Okay. And so, that would not affect our planning and zoning so that a business would, you know, we can determine which businesses go in residential or, I'm sorry, in commercial or industrial?
As it's filed right now, we will take a deeper dive onto it. Like you said, the last thing I ever want to do is give bad information on a substantive piece of legislation here at the podium, but it has been filed. I'll make sure the staff reviews it to see how it'll definitely impact you guys.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to funneling things to you, making phone calls to you, I, you know, I hope this commission will send things to the city manager and let her be the one responsible for contacting you and getting that information back to us instead of getting five or 10 calls a day. I'm just saying, we need to have things streamlined. We like to do things uniform, decency in order here in the city of Boynton. So, I think I point a contact, Mayor, and the rest of you all should be our city manager and let her notify our rep. Thank you.
All right. That sounds, that works for me.
And just to mention, the League of Cities in early January, we'll begin there, they do a Monday morning conference call, which is an update, and we all tune in, and we will participate on those calls every single Monday to find out what's going on. As Matt said, it changes by the second. So, that is a very good resource for us.
Yes, Commissioner Penner.
Matt, in our backup here, we have a document regarding the amendment to this extension of permits. Could you discuss that a little bit?
Sure. It was, it's been brought to my attention by Boynton Beach and other cities that I know of. Whenever there is a statewide declaration emergency, the state law preempts, or essentially preempts, the state law preempts locals, immediately, it gives an extension to all development permits with the idea being if somebody was doing a project and the city, through its normal course, gave them X amount of days in order to complete the project. If a hurricane came, that would be a compelling reason why they couldn't complete the project by that day. That individual, that permit, that contractor, or whatever, should not have to go back to the government to ask for more time to complete something once there was a statewide emergency. However, we all realize there might be a statewide emergency that we obviously don't see any impact from. There could be a declaration emergency for an impending hurricane that never makes landfall in the state of Florida. Most recently, actually, as of a couple of years ago, the opioid crisis was declared see any impact from. There could be a declaration of emergency for an impending hurricane that never makes landfall in the state of Florida. Most recently, actually, as of a couple of years ago, the opioid crisis was declared a statewide emergency and through a weird loophole, extended the development orders on all development orders for all local governments. A couple of years ago, actually last session, they did pass legislation that kind of clarified it some. It got into natural disasters and not disasters of other kinds. But we could get it more specific as to why exactly is there a compelling reason why these development orders are extended, and when are these simply just developers or contractors taking advantage of somebody else's misfortune to give themselves an extension on their project?
And are you seeing support from other legislatures?
Again, it's very early. There's actually no, it's such a fine item, I don't see the point of filing legislation on it and trying to get it passed through both committees on both chambers. It would take up too much time. A lot of issues in Tallahassee are valid issues, they just, there's just not enough time in the day to hear all the good ideas. So it's simply trying to find legislation that would be a good place to amend it to. And right now, we're so early in the process, nothing's moving. I have talked with House and Senate leaders on the topic, and they have said, I've heard about this, I know it's an issue, we think we addressed a lot of it last year, but you have better ideas, Matt, let me know. And so we're currently, I actually got language from the city, and what were you called, shopping it? And so, it's one of those things, it's never a no, it's never a yes, until there's actual bill to attach it to. And then you say, can I put this on this bill right here? And then somebody actually gives you a no or a yes.
All right. Is there anyone else from the board? I think none. Thank you so much.
Always a pleasure. Take care.
All right. Moving on to Item 9A, consider options to rename Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Tom Kaiser.
Mayor?
Would you like to go first, Commissioner?
I'd like to make a comment first because I want to first thank our city manager for sending us a copy of the email this afternoon in regards to what was stated at the last meeting. Okay, in regards to what was stated at the last meeting, Minister Wright stood before us and said that Mr. John Hepburn gave him permission to use his name and also his group, South Florida, whatever the name was, I didn't see it today. And Mr. Hepburn called me that following day in regards to something. Yes, Mr. Hepburn said he was going to contact Minister Wright, and he assured me he did not give Minister Wright permission to use his name nor his group name. So that was a misrepresentation that was given to us at our last meeting. I just wanted to state it for the record that individuals who was going to use individuals' names should not stand up and give us misrepresentation. And that's what was done in regards to that. In regards to Minister Wright stating that, you know, that group was all in favor of doing what was before us. Thank you.
So that was Mr. Hepburn saying that he had Mr. Wright's permission to use his name?
No, no, no. Minister Wright used Mr. John Hepburn's name.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hepburn said he did not give him permission to speak on his behalf because he could speak for himself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Romulus and Penserga.
Thank you. I was going to say, I'm not sure if we need to go into any prolonged conversation about this, but I'm ready to make a motion to support Option 1.
Well, what is Option 1?
Oh, we all were looking at the backup. That would be to have the plaque read Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Tom Kaiser, whose leadership and commitment created this memorial for all veterans as a reminder of their service and sacrifice for our country.
All right. Board member, Commissioner Penserga, you are next.
Thank you. I have to respectfully disagree with my colleague. You know, I think about how I would come to this decision, and I ask myself, what would I do in other cases? So if this had been an issue about nurses or teachers, the first thing I'd do is actually just go to them and ask what they think, what's your opinion? And in a previous meeting, we've already heard veteran after veteran come up here telling us that they support adding the name Tom Kaiser, an individual who has made significant contributions in time and in money in making this happen. And had I heard the opposite, I would not be in support of adding his name. But that's exactly what I heard. Furthermore, we also heard them speak, numerous people said that this would not be in any way be an affront to or devalue other veterans by adding his name. So having said this and not hearing any significant opposition to integrating his name, I am in favor of actually adding Tom Kaiser's name in the official title of the park. Now, I did hear, and I want to ask you, Mr. Kaiser, or perhaps staff, could we clarify if what I heard is true, that if we do incorporate your name, that you are willing to foot the bill for this?
You'd have to go to the podium.
Okay, go ahead and stand up for this.
Yeah, it's at the podium. So before we open it up to public comments, does anyone else from the board have any sort of comments?
I have some.
Yes.
First of all, my comment is that, you know, I stated last time that I'm not in favor of it. I'm still not in favor of it because, first of all, that was city land that was donated by the city. If the name, the park was already changed from one name to another, and talking about we're going to put granite out there, I'm just saying for all parks in the city of Boynton, we have a standard park sign, and that is what we need to continue to use on all of our parks here. And just to say, just because they're veterans, I have nothing against veterans, but I do have something against people trying to get personal recognition for something that they said that they started when they did not start it. Commissioner Bob Ensler, Vice Mayor Bob Ensler was up here and he worked, and nobody seemed from that group to call his name. And I keep telling you all, and I'm going to keep calling his name, and somebody needs to stand up and be man enough to say, no, Commissioner Ensler was instrumental in getting that park over there. Hopefully, somebody will stand up and take gumption from the veterans and explain how we got to where we are, because you're not telling the whole story.
All right. So the comments that I have is that we, you know, we were given two options in the backup, and the way that I was, heard it from Mr. Kaiser was that if we name it after him, just like Harvey E. Sawyer Boat Ramp Park or the Sarah Sims Park, it's not called Boynton Beach Sarah Sims Park, it's not called Boynton Beach Harvey Sawyer Park. And they are not necessarily the ones that did anything with those parks. We named it in recognition. And so that's the aspect that we have today, where we have the opportunity to name the Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Tom Kaiser. And so whether we do it Tom Kaiser Veterans Memorial Park in the city of Boynton Beach, or Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park in honor of Tom Kaiser, you know, I am in favor for what Mr. Kaiser would like, because, you know, I came into the city in 2011, and it was already there. Walked my dog plenty of times around it. It's an amazing piece that we have in the city, and I'm glad that we are at this point, that we can recognize Tom for his effort and time to make this a reality for all veterans. And so I'm going to ask if there's anything less for, if anyone else from the commission has some words before we open it to public comments. Yes, Commissioner Penserga?
I just want to add to my colleague here on my right, Commissioner McCray, I think we should also honor Mr. Bob Ensler, and staff has recommended that his name be added next to the complete name. And so I would be more than willing to approve those changes as well. I just want to say that on the broader picture here, that in this city, if you, any individual makes a significant contribution that impacts the city and its people, whether it's through the park or through a program, by all means, we should be honoring you. That is something I completely support. And, you know, this is what I said in the last meeting, people who have a heart for the city or a heart for Boynton, and you've demonstrated that, sir. So I want to celebrate the individuals who make significant contributions to our culture and our history. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I'm still, regardless of what you said about Commissioner Ensler, I'll be fine with that, but I'm still saying that someone, I'm going to keep standing, from the Veterans Association, need to stand up and publicly speak in regards to Commissioner Bob Ensler and state what he did to get us, get them where they are. I was sitting up here. I don't want nobody to seem like he has been forgotten just because he's dead. I'm sorry. Until somebody stands, I cannot move with this, until somebody from that group speak and let you all know, because I already know what went on.
All right. Is there anyone else from the commission that likes to speak before I open up to the public? I'm going to allow anyone from the public to speak and have all the people from the public speak before we further discussion, because we do have a motion on the floor, however, it has not been seconded. So Colin, I see that we have a microphone that we can bring to some people that it doesn't reach?
Well, it'll reach right here to that seat. I can bring it to him there.
Okay, so if...
There was a motion.
Talking about me, I can say.
Okay. So it's for everybody. So if you'd like to come to the podium and speak, now would be the time. Or, we're getting an extension?
Give me a second.
All right, hold on.
Stay there.
Can we say that?
All right. So if you'd like to raise your hand, we will have the microphone come to you. Yep. So please raise your hand if you would like to speak.
I'm not doing that.
Yes, someone needs to raise their hand to speak. Yes. John, the gentleman next to Tom?
Oh, sorry.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Elliot Silverman. I live in Delray Beach, and I belong to the Korean War Veterans, Chapter 17 in Delray. And I also belong to the American Legion here in Boynton Beach, and 164. It's a great bunch of guys. Tom Kaiser, I met him maybe about two years. And he's one of the hardest workers for veterans. And as far as I'm concerned, I feel that with all the work that this man put in, he deserves some kind of recognition. So this is what I have to bring up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And now I repeat, if you'd like to speak, now is the time. Otherwise, we're going to bring it back to the board. So Tom, or...
I can take the volume.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank, hey, Stephen.
Name an address for the record.
Just, oh, sorry. Tom Kaiser, 1070 Southwest, 20th Terrace, Delray Beach, Old Folks Home. I'm probably one of the younger guys at 92. But in the meantime, I got some of my guys with me here today, okay? And many of the people down there are World War II vets. A lot of them get on buses and come up to the ceremonies and like that. The biggest thing I've ever done in my life is what I'm standing here tonight with. But I want you to know that over the years, I've got monuments in Australia, New Zealand, the Kiel, Cazale, and the Canal in Germany, Four River Mass, about four on Long Island, one in Miami about two years ago I put in. I'm working on one right now at D-Day over in New Orleans, okay? I do everything within my power to keep the word veteran in everybody's eye face. And now let me talk for one minute about Bob Ensler. About 2004 or '05, I had been already five years in ceremonies at the park with the Boynton veterans. And he was there with Jerry Taylor, and the both of them came to me and said, you know, you guys ought to be in the city, under the wing of the city, so that if you need a little bit of a hand or a few bucks, everybody else puts their hand out, you guys can put yours out. Well, we never had to do that. But in the meantime, I had a chance, and I had some money in my pocket, to do something in the way of a memorial. I love Boynton Beach. I lived in West Boynton for many, many years. Plataina first on Military and Boynton Beach Boulevard, and then later out at Ponte Vecchio. As my health deteriorated, when it got closer, later into my eighties, I had to go into where I am now, the Abbey Delray community. But in the meantime, I had met Bob Ensler. I liked Bob Ensler. We were friends, Bob and I. I went to his funeral at his home to sit with his wife, okay? But the city said to me when I called that he passed away in January of '07. The city never gave us an okay on a memorial or the rights to do it until '08, a year later. We didn't put our first monument in for another, almost six months. So it was a year and a half after Bob Ensler passed away. But I always said to Stanley Gavlick, my co-chairman, that we're going to do something both for Jerry and for Bob when the time came. If you saw some of the sheets that I handed out of what monuments, first of all, I thought at the last meeting, you guys shut me out and that I was only going to get the honored guy, okay? So that's the first thing I sent you was pictures of the monument with a small monument on each side. One was going to say Jerry Taylor, Mayor, and our city commissioner, Bob Ensler, in their honor, in granite, just like the same cut of stone as the main one. The other side is going to be for the greatest guy I ever had in veterans, his name is Stanley Gavlick. Stanley, yeah, please. I want you to know that I've worked many, many, many projects in my life with no co-chairman because they only had to argue with me. But Stanley came along, and Stanley, God bless you, okay? Thank you. But anyway, that's what it's going to be. It's going to be the main monument. I pledged to the city that if they decided to call the park Tom Kaiser Park, which was probably the best offer I've had in my life. But just quickly, in my lifetime, I've had meetings with no less than six UN ambassadors, many of them twice, about the missing inaction in Southeast Asia, okay? I've done many, many other things besides what this park has done, but this has been the highlight of my career. I took it on when I was 80 years old. I don't know how many people here in 80 would like to tackle that job. It took us eight years because when the city gave us the ground, they said, you can have the park, Tom, but no money. And I accepted that as a challenge. So it took us eight years because we had to scrimp and save and go out and almost beg for money and whatever to do the park the way it is. There are 24 monuments and 12 gorgeous granite benches. The park has done three years now, but in the last couple of years, what we've done is, Kim Metcalf, her son was killed in Afghanistan. Excuse me. I went to his funeral. I didn't say a word to the lady, but I already knew what I was going to do for her son. And a few months later, I met one of our people under commission, by the way, a young lady, knew him, knew the family, and I got to meet her. We invited her to the park, and I told her, I want to do a bench in your son's honor. She says, you got to let me pay for it. I got about $5,000. The people in the neighborhood all chipped in. I said, if I had to take another job, I'm paying for that. So we took care of it. But what we did was surprise her. When she got there, she didn't know, but I had his picture and color set in granite, and it'll be there forever. So I have to tell you, I made a lady cry, but not on purpose. But in the meantime, a lot of little things that I could reach into my pocket and tell you about that I've done individually, guys needed a few bucks, whatever it was. I've always been there for veterans, and I will be there till the day I die. In fact, I spoke to the mayor of Delray Beach where I lived, and she's going to come up and see what I've done there because they got a beautiful piece of ground in that city. And I won't be able to pay for this park. The city will, but I'm willing to do all of the engineering job or whatever it needs because I now have the expertise to do that. So with a little luck, okay, I am, will be in this city forever because this is my home. I lived here for many, many years, and I love it. I love Jerry Taylor. Jerry Taylor was great. In fact, all of the mayors that I've been in, and Stephen, it's like having a kid brother around, okay? So, but I want you to know that I love this city, okay? And whatever I did there, and some people I told already, the latest estimate on that park is, if you wanted to do it from the ground up, over $200,000. And it's our present, me and Stanley, to the city of Boynton Beach. God bless you.
So... And so, on the podium, we have...
Before we get there...
Yes?
I'm going to, tonight, do a records request. I want you all to pull the records to how we got to getting Veterans Park here in the city of Boynton, and who was instrumental. Thank you. You may proceed now.
All right. So can we ask, sir, we have two motions, or...
Yes, we have two.
Okay. And now, do we have a second for anyone else, for any of those two motions?
Could we clarify what those motions are?
We only have one motion as far as I'm aware.
I thought we only had one.
One that I made.
Yeah.
It was the first one.
It was the only one.
Yeah.
No, I did not make a motion formally, so I would like to make a motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, okay.
To rename this park specifically Tom Kaiser Boynton Veterans Memorial Park, with the addition that we recognize as well, as staff has recommended in their suggestions, at the bottom, as it's been designed and proposed, with special recognition to Mayor Jerry Taylor and Commissioner Robert Ensler.
A second to that motion. I would also request the Commissioner Penserga to include Stanley Gavlick in the second brick there.
I will amend my motion to include that gentleman's name.
All right. The next thing is the additional text and line. Regarding Option 2, I think we're not, because we're including Tom, not to include his etched picture as the name, and that if we include, through, you know, through his vision and leadership of the Boynton Veterans Council, "This park became a tribute to all who served protecting America with the assistance of the mayor, city commission, and the people of Boynton Beach," to be written. And not that final line, "His vision became a reality," because we already mentioned about his vision in the beginning part of the paragraph. Yes?
So the, just to clarify, you said include the language minus the last sentence, no picture?
Correct.
Paragraphs?
Say it one more time?
Both of those paragraphs?
Yes. So it'll be a combination of, go back to the previous slide?
Option 1.
Nope, that's not the previous, the next slide then. The next slide, there we go. So Tom Kaiser, United States Navy, Boynton Veterans Memorial Park, and then go up. "Through his vision and leadership of the Boynton Veterans Council, the park became a tribute to all who served protecting America with assistance of the mayor, city commission, and the people of Boynton Beach," with especially, and then the two side bricks.
Okay, that's different than what Commissioner Penserga proposed in his motion in terms of the title of the park.
I'm asking him to amend his motion to include that.
Yes, I will amend my motion to include that.
And then, so Vice Mayor, if you'd... Second.
Clarification?
Yes.
So just in terms of payment for the monument, I wanted to make sure we're all clear on that. Is that still something that Mr. Kaiser is volunteering to? Is that still something that Mr. Kaiser is volunteering to fund?
Tom?
So just to repeat again what's going to be.
So the, it's going to be called Tom Kaiser, United States Navy, or USN, Boynton Beach Veterans Park? So scroll back. There we go. Tom Kaiser, United States Navy, I would say Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial, Boynton Beach Veterans Memorial Park, and then we don't, you know, or you want, and then we include the additional lines?
So it's. So it's the one on the right, and then the, and then the additional lines would be?
On the bottom.
I just want to make sure I've got it clear, is those lines that are on there, minus the last line.
Correct.
And then the two stones at the bottom, which is?
Yes, we recognize as individuals as well.
Yeah.
They would be actually on each wing.
And so, we're going to, we would take a verbal approval. I would need a yes.
One more?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
While I think it, you know, it further shows the generosity and dedication to the park that Mr. Kaiser has offered to pay for it, and speaking to the city manager, and she can affirm, affirm what I'm about to say, I think that the cost differential between what would be the standard replacement sign that we would do and the requested granite sign was only $3,000 to $4,000. And with respect to the generosity, I just think that we can find that money in the budget, not take it from Parks and Recs and deter from the existing Parks and Recs programming, but somewhere else in the budget, we can come up with $3,000 or $4,000 to cover the additional cost of the, of the different sign than we would have put. That's my position, if the city manager can confirm the kind of cost.
The yellow sign that's there now.
It will not be there.
The sea of granite, that park here, the gorgeous granite we spent, we got the.
So, I'm saying that I support exactly what you want, not making you pay for it, because, because.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the discussion on that yellow thing there really doesn't look. I'm not, I'm not adjutant beauty, but I have to tell you, really, there's a.
Okay. We agree. All right, I agree. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. You agree, but I'm just saying, but it might not be beauty, Mr. Kaiser, but that is the standard for all of our signs, and I'm going to leave it at that. Okay, but I remember, I'm in favor of what you all have already said, as long as you all add Jerry Taylor, okay, former commissioner, Bob Ensler, and the gentleman to the left over there, I'm just saying, right. I'm also in favor of not having Mr. Kaiser pay for it. Now, since we're going to add those individuals who was instrumental and happened to do what was done here in the city, I just don't, one person, whether they kept it going or not, to get recognition because they had to start from somewhere, and those two individuals down there were sitting on the commission that brought it before us, and that's why I want to make sure that they're recognized, and I'm in favor of it now.
Okay, so Vice.
People were going to be honored a long time before you brought that up.
No, it wasn't, sir.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Just to clarify, in support of the granite sign, not the typical sign that we have, I just think that the city could pay for it pending an assessment of price. So I support the granite sign.
Okay. So, very nice. So we're not asking you for money now, if the city's finally going to pay for something.
I thank you very much.
All right. Wait, Tom, 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 we, just wait. So, I'm going to ask the city manager, do you have clarification with the motion and the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
What are we on?
We are on consent administrative. So, improve the request of mayor grant to distribute $200 of my community support funds to farther outreach a project of the Boynton Beach Community Development Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the board? All in favor state so by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on the city advisory board. The way I'd like to do it is that we'll go by, if there are more people than seats, that we do it all at once, but if there are more, if there are more seats than people, then we do it all at once, but if there's more people than seats, we do it one by one. Is that okay with the commission? So for the commission, there are six spots, and there are six people applying, we'll do each nomination and then do it one time. So I'd like, so Commissioner Pinserga, you are first.
Yes, I see you have a regular appointment. I'd like to nominate Saddam Silverio to this position.
All right.
And should I nominate my alternate?
No.
Wait.
Just wait. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Marsha Levine.
Second.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'll nominate Dario Ayala.
All right. Commissioner McCray?
Clovis Modell.
Commissioner Romulus?
Are we just still nominating?
Yep.
Okay. Martin Kluber, I believe, is left?
Yep.
Second.
And Commissioner Pinserga?
I'd like to nominate Clovis.
Robin Lorenz is the last one.
Robin.
All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Building Board of Adjustments and Appeal, I'd like to nominate Daniel Berger.
Second.
And Vice Mayor?
Damian Brink.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor?
Former Mayor Jerry Taylor.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board?
I'd like to nominate Alan Hendricks.
That's, it's Commissioner Romulus is.
Thank you.
She gets.
You're a little quick on the gun there. Alan Hendricks.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. I don't believe any of them are student, so Commissioner Pinserga for Education Youth Advisory Board?
Dr. Vanolo Rada, please.
Okay.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Tiffany North.
Second.
Vice Mayor?
I'll do Shereika Young.
Shakira.
Shakira, I'm sorry.
Second.
And then Commissioner McCray?
Javett Gatson.
I'll second that.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Historic Resource Preservation Board, Commissioner Pinserga?
I'd like to nominate Ben Lowe.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Mike Wilson.
Second.
And Vice Mayor?
Jesse Philman.
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Library Board, I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Sherlock.
Second.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Dr. Stephanie Aiden Adama.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Planning and Development Board, I'd like to nominate Tim Litch.
Second.
So since there's more applicants than positions, we'll vote on individuals?
Yep. So all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Katz?
I'll nominate Susan Lor, who sent emails to us. Her name isn't on the backup material, but I believe her name is eligible because she had a previous application, and it just didn't pick up on this round.
I will second this.
I just want clarification on all of that.
Okay. And Jim, is that fine?
If it's been in before. The application was received on Sunday, and in our office on Monday, and provided to commission tonight.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Board Member, Commissioner McCray, I'm sorry.
David Katz.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Okay, next would be Dr. James Avosny.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Romulus?
Darren Allen.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. And Commissioner Pinserga?
Lyman Phillips.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Recreation and Parks Board, I believe we have more than the applicants, so we'll do it individually. Commissioner Romulus?
Charles Kanter.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Pinserga?
Rene Stern.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. For me, Elizabeth Pierce Rowe.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Vice Mayor Katz?
Charles Frederick.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner McCray, you have the alternate.
Okay, it's going to be.
Julia Mandello or Marcia Bianta?
Okay, Julia Mandello.
Second. Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Senior Advisory Board, Commissioner McCray?
Jennifer Gomez.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Romulus?
Allison Black.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Jim, I see for some of our boards, we may not have a quorum for the advisory board. If there is no quorum present, they cannot make recommendations to the city commission?
That's correct.
Can they still have an informational meeting?
No.
So.
Because the risk of communication without the quorum is too high.
Okay. And so, I guess at our next meeting, we will see which boards have the requisite quorum, and we will have to make a decision, because I don't believe our Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals has a requisite quorum, if I'm not mistaken.
There's been, the last three meetings I've been to, there has been a quorum.
Well, the only two applied for the seven spots.
Right.
So that means that the other few that were there are no longer coming back. All right.
Now to go to a meeting.
Yeah. So, moving on to Consent Agenda, would someone like to pull an item from Consent Agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Commissioner Romulus?
I'd like to pull items F, K, M, and T.
T, you said?
T as in Thomas.
Okay. Commissioner McCray?
She pulled, M and T, those are mine as well.
You said?
M and T, she pulled, those were mine as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Mayor, I need D and E polled, and I'll, could explain both in one fell swoop when we get to that.
All right. Is there anything else? So we will start with Proposed Resolution Number 19-147, Proposed Resolution 19-148. Jim, would you like to explain?
Yes, both of those have contracts as part of the backup. In those contracts, there is a provision regarding venue in the event of a dispute. One says Leon County, the other says state of Georgia. We always insist that venue is in Palm Beach County, so I would ask that those two approvals be contingent upon an agreement that those venue references be changed.
So moved.
Second.
So I'd like to speak from our library director, because the 2004E, and I guess in the state of Georgia, you know, how, you know.
I'll say this, that 99 times out of 100, when we ask that venue be changed, we get an agreement on that, that's not an issue.
Okay.
Somebody that wants to do business in Florida should submit to Florida jurisdiction.
Yeah, what?
What can I answer for you, Mayor?
Okay, well, so I'm going to ask, what is the, I guess?
A library?
Yeah, for the Bibliotech Cloud Library Database.
Okay. What it is, it's a shared database of ebook materials, shared with a number of libraries throughout the state of Florida.
Is that the Overdrive system?
No, that, this is a little bit different. There's a few different ones, that we're going to add this one, and this is going to work hand in hand with our new self-check, our self-checks that we're going to be installing in our new library as well. But it's a, it's a shared database, so if you wanted to check out a particular title, and it's not on the electronic shelf in our library, if it's available over at Tampa Hillsborough in their, in their electronic shelf, if you will.
Yes.
You can check theirs out.
Okay.
So it's a shared database, so it's a very inexpensive proposal based on what our return on investment will be.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. In regards to Cloud Library, I use it all the time. Thank you, long overdue for the city of Boynton. I'd like to see our name now instead of me going someplace else. Thank you, Palm Beach County. Thank you.
So, I may have a motion on Proposed Resolution Number 19-147, with the changes by our city attorney.
So moved.
You already had a motion.
Yeah.
Did have the motion for, well, we need to do it for both. I need to do it for individually.
Yeah, now you approve him individually.
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-148, may have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item F, approve and authorize, Proposed Resolution Number 19-149, approve and authorize the city manager to enter into agreement for renewal of an annual subscription to Recorded Books Transparent Language Database for one year in the amount of $2,400.
So moved.
Where is he? I just wanted the library director to kind of speak on this and just share with the members of our community what this is and how it benefits us, just real quick.
That's letter F, correct?
Yes.
Transparent Languages is a database that has multiple languages that people can, it's a self, self-time type thing. You can learn different languages, and probably 20 some different languages, including improving your English skills. So it's a very well-used database, and this is why I would recommend continuing with it.
Craig, you're not doing a great job of selling this, so I'll sell it for you.
All right. Sorry.
So basically, I wanted to just talk about this, simply because, you know, you have So basically, I wanted to just talk about this simply because, you know, you have programs or apps like Babbel and Duolingo, and they're free, but there's still sometimes some type of like charge or whatever to, to learn another language, but from what I understand, this program is free, correct?
This program is free to the public. It costs us about $3 per session. We had over 800 sessions this past year, so it is a well-used product. Like I said, a number of foreign languages and a lot of, English as a second language learners use it as well, and some children.
Awesome. So, I like, motion to...
I think for selling it, both of y'all tied.
All right. Thank you. And I believe we have a motion and second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item K, proposed resolution number 19-153, approve consultant agreement that will allow staff to offer the after-school outreach initiative program at Pointe City Elementary School. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I also wanted to clarify a question on this so that we can educate our community about what this is and how it benefits our residents.
Good evening, Wally Majors Recreation and Parks Director. This is a part of the initiative that the mayor started whereby we are working with local schools by providing support to their after-school programs and by involving our recreation staff to go there and basically introduce the students to various sports-related skills and fundamentals. And this is the second year we've been doing it. It's been very well-received and look forward to keep doing it in the future.
My question is, no busing, right?
No, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And I want to thank the, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. I want to thank the commission about this. One of the things that, you know, I've realized that most of our schools are Title I, and that means they may not have the funds available to join the after-school programs, and so I want to make sure people are aware of the vice mayor's scholarship to attend any of our different parks and recs activities. I don't know if anyone's taken him up on his offer, but I just want the public to know that we want our residents who, regardless of income, to be using our parks and recreation. Moving on to item M, proposed resolution number 19-155, award RFP and authorize the city manager to enter into a two-year contract with Beck's Towing Recovery, Inc. for towing and storage services.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Yes.
I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll let you go first.
Yeah, I'd like to know in regards to staff and raking this, you know, how did we get where we are with this?
Yes, Randy Wood, the purchasing managers for the city of Wayne Beach. Well, we had four people serve on our evaluation team, and it was represented by the police department, community standards, the fire department, and we also had some, our fleet manager in public works for fleet maintenance. So, we initially did an evaluation of the written proposals, and then we went and did our, all of us, the entire team, visited each of the sites of the three proposals received. And we discovered some discrepancies and some things that were questionable on our site visits, in contrast to what was actually in the proposals that were, that were submitted to us. So we went out for best and finals to get some clarification and confirmation of the information provided. And then based on that information and the revelations that occurred through the site visits, we reevaluated the, you know, the three proposals, and that's how we derived the final evaluation scoring that was submitted here. And as you know, we had two that were within .05 points of each other in the overall average scoring, and in the provision itself, I mean, in the proposal provisions, it stated, when there's a tie, then it would go to the one with the highest franchise offering. And in this case, it was essentially a tie, so the team unanimously agreed to recommend Beck's Towing, which offered the highest franchise fee.
How long have we been using Beck's Towing in the city of Wayne?
Well, Beck's Towing, I'm not sure. I think it's, help me out on this.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. In, in the past year, what happened, we had two towing companies, Blakes and Beck's. However, Blakes no longer service the city, so Beck's serviced the city solely for the past year. And they have proven themselves to be dependable and capable of providing our needs. And that's why the team opted to recommend the single-source provider, since it was Beck's, and they've demonstrated that they're capable of providing that need, and they offered the highest franchise fee as a single provider.
But when Beck started here in 1998, they started on a rotating basis, am I correct? Yes?
That's my understanding.
I'm through with my questions, thank you.
I have a question. So I don't believe exactly what came up, but I know a year or two years ago, we had an issue regarding our towing company not paying us the franchise fee. Has that all been cleared up?
I think so.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And that was my question, that's why I wanted to pull it. So if that's been cleared up and we don't have any more issues with towing companies not being able to reimburse us or pay us, then I'm okay with that.
All right. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion from the board? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item T, approved task order with WGI in the amount of $29,377 in accordance with the RFQ professional survey and mapping services contract awarded by city commission on January 17, 2017 to provide professional survey and mapping services for the alleys' abandonment project in Ridgewood and Cherry Hills neighborhood. Yes, Gary, would you like to explain that?
Hi, I'm Gary Dunmire, city engineer. This project was brought up to see if the commission's will was to vacate some unused land. We've got easements behind homes that are unused, they're a burden to take care of, and so if the city wills it, we'd like to move forward with this task order. And the idea behind it would be, we'd get the survey necessary to support an application. That application would go to the planning and development board. It would be advertised to the public. Everybody within 400 feet of an easement abandonment would be notified. They'd be called in to state their support or objection at the planning and development meeting, and then after that, it would go to commission twice, based on whatever recommendation the planning and development board gave.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Gary, this is nice, but my take is that, you know, if you all give this to us, because I live over there, I'm just saying, we're gonna have people that have those, the alleys, they don't want to take care of now.
Right.
And this is gonna leave, start making this looks like, you know, hell over there. I'm just saying. How will we make sure that they take care of their alleys? I'm just saying.
Well, the alleys would become their property. They'd have the option.
I'm aware of that, sir.
They could put a fence in.
That's just why I'm asking this question. I know it will become our property, but I'm saying, how will we make sure that they take care of the mow and the keeping up of their properties? Please listen to what I'm saying. Because once we tell them, you know, you own this, they're not gonna take care of it, it's gonna grow up, it's gonna look like hell, then we gonna have snakes over there, we gonna have rats over there, and I'm trying to say, you know, it's nice to give it to us, but the giving to us is not the only thing. The giving it to us is who's gonna be responsible for making sure that they take care of that property. Right now, you all are taking care of it. How much are you all charging us for taking care of that property for mowing it?
Well, it's $21,000 a year for annual maintenance.
It's $21,000 a year.
Yes, sir.
I'm quite sure that this city is not hurting for that kind of money, that they want to abandon that and put $21,000 someplace else to make us start mowing things when we're gonna have rats over there? We already got raccoons, we got possums, and I'm just saying, these people are not going to take care of the back of their property, and I'm just saying, what we're going to be doing is open up an avenue for the alleys that start looking like hell before you all start taking care of it, and I don't want it to go back to that.
All right.
I don't mind getting the property, but I'm just saying, $21,000 to give it to us and then burn us about, you got to go out there and mow the back of it now, some of it might be already overgrown. It's not fair.
So...
Pay taxes.
All right. My question is, is that, is, are there electrical poles?
Yes.
In these alleys?
Some of these alleys do have, or will require easements, yes.
And so if we lose our easement, do FPL need to, how will FPL access these properties if people put up their fence?
We, we would vacate the alleys. Half the alley would go to the adjacent property owner. Before we vacated the alley, we would overlay it with an easement, and that easement would still stand after we vacated the land.
My question is, is that, let's say the person gets these new, gets this new abandonment, and they want to put a fence on their property...
Yes.
Surrounding a telephone, electrical pole.
Well, what would happen is they'd make an application, they'd be able to expand their fence to the limits of the easement. They, they wouldn't necessarily be able to encroach upon the easement.
So how do we abandon an easement and then tell them that they can't build there? It's...
We would, we would abandon the easement, or abandon the alley and place an easement. They would probably still have to mow on the outside of their fence.
So I, now I understand what Commissioner McCray is saying.
Yes.
That, you know, unless FPL wants to do an undergrounding in this area, I don't feel that this is something that is beneficial to the community, because all there's, what's gonna happen is, is that that extra area, they can't close it off because, and fence it up, because there's still gonna be an easement that the city's gonna have, and now we're giving people, it's like having a sidewalk you have to maintain, even though there's no reason to have a sidewalk there.
Ken Fincher.
Good evening, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. This is something that we've undertaken in the past. Sometimes we get them as a voluntary basis, where the adjacent property owners would come in and say, we'd like to acquire that right-of-way behind our house because we want to put a shed or something in. So just because we vacate the right-of-way and place an easement doesn't mean they cannot build in it. Typically, what will happen is they'll have to put in some type of hold harmless agreement with the permit, so if they put in a fence, it would just be that the utility company would then have access to take it down, and then they, typically they would put it back up. And a lot of the times, for instance, most of the utilities in those areas are actually either sewer or water, which were, where I think there's plans to relocate those anyway, but we would, we would take care of those through the, like if it was sanitary sewer, they usually do lining, so typically they don't have to get back in those easements. But if they were to get back in the easements, they could, they could use a, they have a hold harmless agreement, where typically the utility companies would take down the fence or relocate something to fix what they have.
So, I don't have enough information regarding all of this, and so...
So what we're asking for right now is strictly just to do the survey work, to get the, the process started, to get the notifications. So in some areas, these actually, some of the residents have expressed interest that they would like to have that property, because then they could expand their yard, they could do additional, different things. And I, and I understand that, you know, obviously there's concerns about overgrowth, but that would be taken care of through a community standards, through enforcement action, because that would be their property, that'd be private property, and then we'd have to do it through an enforcement action.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. I understand what you all are saying, but we have elderly people over there, and they call me all the time now when you all don't go back there and mow, and then for having these old people saying that you all got to go out there and start mowing now. You are not, just to say $21,000, you know, I'm just saying, everybody don't want the right-of-way, and you all mow like you feel like it anyway, so I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I don't see any use, and then, and right where my property is, I have a telegram pole. So, you know, why give me something, I'm gonna be, you know, responsible, hey, I can't go any further, I got a pole sitting up here. You know, come on, let's be reasonable. $21,000, you all continue to do the mowing, you know, if they want to take it and put, they, let them bite into it, but you know, don't, don't, put everybody, burn all of us with it. I'm, I'm just saying, because they don't take care of the stuff over there now, and all you all going to do is open up the avenue for trash to be in the back of those places, rats gonna be back there, and, and, and I don't want to have to come in here and start almost cussing, because I don't mind cussing.
Absolutely.
It's my second language. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, I understand with the, the survey aspect of it, the, the problem is, is that once we start with this whole issue, it's kind of, we're leading ourselves down, and so I need the more information where, you know, does the survey tell us where the utility lines are?
Correct. The surveys will show the legal and sketches and any improvements they'll identify that are in the right-of-way.
Okay, and so until we do the survey, we're not gonna know what's there and what's not there.
I mean, we've done a, a drive-by with a vehicle to see what's there, so we, we do know what's there, we can see that, we know what's impacted.
And so I think, you know, I'd like to, to move forward because there's some areas that are okay, because this, you know, I'm looking at it, you're talking over three acres of alleyway abandonment, and some of those make sense and some of them don't make sense. And so we got, we'll do it all at once, and then we'll figure out, you know, and we'll speak with Commissioner McCray, which areas make sense and which areas don't make sense.
Ridgewood Hill and Cherry Hill, neither one of these areas right now makes sense. Cherry Hill is, is drug-ridden, and you all start putting, letting that stuff grow up there, we gonna have drug addicts hanging out in the bank, and you all, you know, it's, it's not fair. I, I'm just saying, you know, you know where your stuff is, I'm just saying, to give us, you know, hey, you got 40 more little inches or 40 more outside, now you got to run out there with the mow. I'm taking care of mine, the neighbor's not taking care of theirs. You all are only paying 20, we paying $21,000, please hear me, for y'all to come out, for people, whoever y'all got to mow, let them continue to mow. And I'm just saying, if somebody come in and say, you know, I want to build my property and go out a little further, then address it then, I'm just saying, but you know, you all are opening up a whole can of worms, well, the people that own property over there, and nine times out of 10, the people that own the property is rental property, and they don't take care of them now, and I'm just saying, we appreciate what you all are doing. What you all trying to do right now, it's not gonna benefit us.
Understood.
Please don't do it.
So do we have a motion or do we, and a second?
Question.
Yes.
How frequently does the city do, do something of this? Because I can't recall having a discussion on it in the past couple of years, so if it's always gone through on consent without objection, I'm just curious how, how constant this is, or how...
As far as the maintenance or for the abandonment?
The abandonment of the currently maintained...
When I first started in the city in 2010, at that time, I did, I was doing, trying to do at least one or two a year, that we're doing a whole alley at a time. And again, a lot of those were done where someone would voluntarily come and say, hey, I would like to acquire this property, they had two neighbors that were wanting to expand their yard or whatnot, and so we would do the whole alley at that point, because basically all this land is surplus land, we're not using it. We're, I mean, other than we have improvements, the city doesn't, you, we don't drive trucks down through there, we're not driving garbage trucks through there, so that's, that's why we, we propose this is surplus land, that we don't want to take care of it. As far as the maintenance, right now, we do it on a monthly basis, and, and I have to be honest with you, I think we could do a better job, but it's gonna take more money than $21,000. And that's part of that reason why we're looking to get rid of this, is because I think honestly, we really need to look at increasing the budget to maintain these areas a little bit more than what we are doing now, if we're gonna keep them.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. If you're going to, you know, give us the alley, do like Del Rey, go back there and put, you know, make it so that they can drive back there, put blight tar back there and everything, I'm just saying, so that it, we don't have to worry about, you know, mowing anything, I'm just saying. You do that, then give it to us, don't give it to us just for grass, I'm saying, you know, tell them I'd increase the budget, you, you, this city do anything that they want to, whenever they want to, they spend money like it's water sometime. I don't have a problem voting for y'all to keep on mowing, I'm just saying, mowing is keeping down drug activity, it's keeping down trash at the backyards and stuff, we don't have washing machines back there now, we, we don't have things like stoves back there. Do this, they gonna be throwing stuff over the fence. I, I know, I live there. I've been in Boynton for 65 years, in that same district.
So, so we can do that analysis and look at what it would cost to pave the alleys and see what it, you know, what those impacts were and bring it back to you? That's not a problem? That's something that you want to do?
Yeah, that's what I'm in favor of. Keep doing the alleys, I'm just saying.
So, yeah. We'll table it to discuss, and bring it back with the discussion for, under, I guess, old business, for the, the paving of the alleyways before abandonment.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll run some projected numbers on, see what it would cost to improve the areas before we turn it over, and do the cost-benefit analysis and, and work with some of the neighborhoods and see, get, maybe we could even outreach into the neighborhood.
And so the, the big issue is that if some people want their, the property be abandoned, we, we need to know that, because as of currently, we don't know that...
Sure. Absolutely. To our, their commissioner, nobody wants it. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Want a motion to table?
If you would.
Motion to table.
I don't really see this as a motion to table, because we're asking him to do something completely different, and this has no relevance to what's the item that's in front of us.
Well then, would you like to vote, have a motion to approve?
Well, will the, the potential for paving still require the survey work?
No. You're not gonna, you're not gonna pave it.
Well, the, the, right now, the, the, the survey work is to be a part of, to support the application. If we're going to pay, we'll probably need survey work as well. Yes. But it'll probably be a little bit different survey work if we do paving.
So this won't be required in the...
At this time, if we're not going to move forward with the abandonment, then I'd rather just wait till we can come back to you and make a, you know, bring you a full disclosure package of what, what, so you can make a better decision.
Thank you. I just brought up the idea about pavement, if you pave back there, you're gonna have them AVs and them two-wheelers spinning up and down the road, you got more problems. I'm, please listen, I, I, I live over there, I know, I know what's going on.
I know, I, I know, even one time, we looked at even closing off the ends, I know that it was some discussion.
They still gonna ride them.
You made a strong sales pitch for the paving.
Yeah, but it's just gonna have the AVs going up and down there, I know, and the dirt bikes and everybody on two wheels.
So we do have a motion to table. Is there a second on the motion to table? Sing none? Do we have a, a motion on this item? Sing none? Item is not approved for lack of motion. Good. Thank you.
So are we giving direction and they know what we want?
The kind of development origins where we live at, we're almost 300 years old between us, usually a bit, no idea.
Okay.
Thoughts we may, but I would say each and every one of the council members, the mayor, the city manager, I know you stood for that flagpole. But in the meantime, I want to say thank you very much regardless of your opinion, one way or the other. I love you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe drive home.
Thank you.
So do we have consensus of the board to look at improvement values of these alleyways? Okay. Yes, so we have that sort of discussion for city staff.
What was that she just said?
We are approving city staff to look at improving the alleyways and then coming, making a decision whether to abandon them after improving.
No.
And/or if we continue to maintain them, what that increased cost may be, but it was to just develop a, a cost estimate to pave.
Yes.
That's what one discussion was, that you had originally suggested maybe to pave it. So we don't have to worry about it being overgrown. But if we don't, because we'll just get a cost estimate to do that or would you...
Just get a cost estimate, but I'm still saying, Laurie, you all are not listening, if you pave it back there, people already talking about the bikes going up and down the road and, and in the roads, the AVs and the dirt bikes or whatever you want to call them. I'm just saying, you're going to give them an avenue where they're gonna be, it's gonna be like a racetrack over there. Hell, somebody's gonna get killed and when they get killed, they gonna say, well, you all did it.
All right. We, we got a three.
Want us to get the estimate of paving or not?
Yes, we have the consensus to get the cost.
We'll, we'll, we'll provide several options.
You know, and stop, stop. Let me say one more thing. You know, it's nice that people that don't live in District Two can say what they want to see done in somebody else's district. I'm saying, I represent District Two and I'm catching hell now because people are not taking care of what they supposed to take care of and, and, and Commissioner Romulus, I'm gonna say this tonight, you have people from your district raising, saying, but you about you're not doing your job. I'm trying to do mine now, you over here trying to help me do something that don't need any help. Cherry Hill and Ridgewood Hills don't need any help. We are okay with it the way it is, you all just need to keep mowing.
All right. Does someone want to change their mind for the consensus?
Please don't.
All right. Then we still got the consensus. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000, 7A, I do believe we have a presentation? Or is that what you already gave?
He's already given it, already given it.
Okay. So yes, I'd like to...
Do it again.
No. Proposed resolution number 19-156 regarding the towns, uh, our new downtown playground equipment and adventure park. May I have a motion to approve?
We improved the whole consent agenda?
Yes, we did.
You could do it by one motion.
I did want to pull item B.
You can't.
Oh, yeah.
You can't do it by one motion now.
I, we can do it by also, yes. I was doing it...
Oh, never mind, I take that back. Colin already answered it when we had that resident up here in return, in terms of the Central Seacrest Quarter project, so it's fine. I got my answers.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for bids and purchases over $100,000.
All right. I'd like to ask one question on item C, though. So, all right, can I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda except for item C?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
There.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Um, for item C, uh, I was, Andrew, I was looking at the, the police vehicles and that we're getting seven hybrid vehicles and non, nine non-hybrid vehicles for the police interceptors. And so I just want to know what, uh, the theory was only getting seven hybrids versus, you know...
Which, which areas? Those are police interceptors, so those are patrol cars.
Yes. And so are we using the, the seven hybrids as kind of a test to see if they work out better than the regular gas?
Yes, so this year is the first year they offered a hybrid, uh, electric vehicle for the police interceptors.
Okay.
So we are dipping our toes in that to see what the, how the, how they perform. So we're ordering seven at this time.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Is the, the advertised performance of those hybrids comparable to the, the gas power?
Actually, uh, they actually perform a little bit better than the gas power, from what I've been told.
But we don't necessarily know the reliability because they're new.
Yeah, there's, this is the first year they offered it. I, I know that, you know, there's a lot of data on other electric vehicles, so, uh, difference is that this is in a police interceptor type of vehicle, so there's, you know, there's definitely difference trying to pre, Prius versus a police interceptor. So, but from what we've seen and, and a lot of the departments are ordering them, so we're going to start looking at this into our fleet to see if this is a long-term option for us.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to public hearing, our 9B, request action by city commission authorize staff to implement the Inclusion Works Business Recreation Recognition Program and approve the use of 1% of business tax receipts to fund the program beginning in fiscal year 2020.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion from the board? Sing none? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to presentation by staff and grant recipients of fiscal year 1819 Entrepreneurship and Business Incubation Grant Program results and findings.
While that's getting loaded, John Durgan, Economic Development Specialist. Before I begin, I just want to recognize that our grant recipients are here tonight. We have Annette Gray with the GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. We have Joe Russo with the 1909. We have, I think she's still here, Dr. Angela Shuttlesworth with Belee Grow. And we have Ms. Cassandra Daddyis with Connect the Greatness. I just want to recognize them in case you have any questions at the end you want to ask them.
I have another question, I have a comment. Anytime we have presentations like this, I'm, I'm just saying, but can we get them done early because by the time these things come, I'm kind of exhausted at 9:30. I'm just saying, there's stuff that needs to be done prior.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I'm just telling you, my colleagues, I'm just...
I'll be, I'll be brief in my presentation.
Move it up.
Uh, just an overview of the grant that we did for the, for fiscal year 1819. We funded, uh, two business incubators, one new, one existing, and we funded working groups on entrepreneurship and youth, technology, women, and regional networks. The two incubators that we funded, one was the GBDC Entrepreneurship and the other one was the 1909. The start of Spark was the incubator program run by 1909. Um, it was a four-week collaborative program designed to help idea-stage founders refine their business ideas, plug into the local entrepreneurial ecosystem, and build positive momentum. And within that four-week program, uh, there was a written application form online for the applicants. There were 16 applicants, um, they had a interview, um, the 1909 interviewed each candidate to move forward. There was 12 cohorts that were members of the incubator, um, there were 12 founders from nine different companies. And, and how that program operated was there, um, one, uh, weeknight per week, there was a, a coaching seminar from, from six to 10, uh, from, excuse me, from six to 9:00 PM. And the venue was Buzzies, it's a Boynton Beach e-commerce startup over on Congress. Um, so that's where they were located within the city limits. And then they also did additional events on, on top of the, the, uh, six to nine, uh, weeknight, which was some workshops they did, um, with some local experts that were, they were on their staff. And they also followed that up at the end with a pitch event, uh, for all the companies that, that were involved. And just here's the name of the cohorts, and there's more information, uh, in your, in your backup through their reports, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of it. I'll skip that for the time being. The second incubator that we funded was the GBDC Entrepreneurship Institute. That consisted of one-on-one business coaching for technical assistance. They help with minority certification and small business government contract certifications. Uh, again, there was a written application form online, the people had, um, had to apply for the incubator. They facilitated, uh, an interview with, with each candidate, the cohorts, there was 27, uh, companies involved. And the frequency of those, there were eight workshops that were conducted, um, over this time period, um, and that was located at 1500 Gateway Boulevard. And they also had one-on-one coaching, and I'll go over, um, in more detail on exactly how much. Here are the cohorts that were involved, some of them. And just to, to briefly read, read these off, there were 27 businesses that participated, they conducted eight different workshops, uh, they conducted over 150 hours of one-on-one co, coaching and mentoring. The number of businesses that were started in the incubator, there was two that were started, um, there was a business converted from a, from an LLC to an S corp, there was two of those. The number of businesses completed, uh, the application for IRS for nonprofit status, logo designs, copyright, and trademark search. There were business plans developed and marketing plans developed. And on top of the incubators that were funded, we funded work groups on entrepreneurship for, for women entrepreneurs, youth entrepreneurs, technology entrepreneurs, and regional networks on entrepreneurship. The, the working group on women, the methodology was networking mixers, surveys, and in-person events. The sole purpose of these working groups was to find, uh, identify barriers and opportunities that the city can initiate to help, uh, women entrepreneurs. And some of the, the biggest findings and barriers of their reports, um, was obviously access to, to capital and funding, um, marketing and branding online was, was a big, uh, barrier, access to, to leadership development training, um, for those entrepreneurs, um, access to quality professionals in their industry, and access to government, typically government contracts. The working group on youth entrepreneurs, this is, this was the one that was, um, a little bit different from the rest. How it was conducted, there were student surveys, there were 71 students ages 11 to 18 that were surveyed from Boynton Beach High School, Congress Middle, um, and, and South Tech, and they also interviewed businesses in the community. They, they surveyed them to see if they would be interested in conducting a mentorship program to help those youth entrepreneurs get early access to, to, um, entrepreneurship in, in different types of businesses in, uh, in, in different sectors. So there was 10 of those businesses that were surveyed as well. And some of the findings that, that we found here, so for some of our youth, we are a diverse community, so English proficiency, um, providing the, the, the skills in, in teaching youth entrepreneurship and, and business skills, there's, there's a lack of that, um, in our community. Mentorship goal-setting, um, the, one of the biggest things they found in, in those reports where the youth, um, had some trouble or some of them didn't know how to set goals and achieve those goals. So it's, it's the basics, not even just in, in business, but in life as well. And to encourage businesses to provide mentorships, internships, and training opportunities for, for youth, that was one of the big initiatives they, they recommended to help solve one of the barriers. The working groups on, uh, technology, uh, they, they interviewed entrepreneurs that either own or are starting up, uh, tech companies. And some of the barriers they found, um, not, not so much barrier, but the findings were that Boynton Beach was affordable. Boynton Beach added, uh, they recommended we add it, um, to the, the, the city keep funding the additional, uh, accelerator programs that we currently do. So that was one of the recommendations, and also establishing a 3,500 square foot entrepreneurial workspace. So that's kind of in line with our innovation space that we're, we're currently looking at for Town Square. In the working group on, on regional entrepreneurs, again, they, they found the same thing, that Boynton Beach was affordable, um, they provided, they asked the, the city continue to fund and, or if not fund, support, uh, accelerator programs within the city and as well, um, provides, uh, a, a, a incubator space where those entrepreneurs can go and, uh, and develop in floors here in the city. And this is just a brief overview of what we recommended for the next fiscal year for 1920. The incubators that we would like to support are women-owned businesses, uh, youth entrepreneurs, technology companies, and minority-owned businesses. And then the, the working groups that we want to change this year was sustainability, hospitality and tourism, health, and the gig economy. And the incubators for next year, we really want them to focus and we've, uh, developed some metrics, um, to help, help measure this, but really help these, these businesses, uh, focus on capital and funding, the business education, online presence and e-commerce, and helping them, uh, find, um, affordable space for them to operate their business out of. Any questions?
I, I have one. What is the amount of that grant?
For, for this coming fiscal year, 1920?
This coming fiscal year.
So the incubators, each one of those will be a total of $10,000 and the working groups will stay at 2,500.
What is the total?
$50,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, so what we did differently this year, Commissioner McCray, based on some comments that the, the commission had made based from last year's program was to, instead of doing the two larger grants, two $20,000 grants, and then the, the couple five or the 2,500s, we're able to, we're doing some smaller ones to get more people the opportunity.
I understand, just wanted to know the...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Penner.
First, I'd like to commend the work that you and David have been put through into all of this. I think this is a great start, John. So thank you for all that you've done.
Yep.
I just want to add, and this may be premature comment, but premature to the, the budget workshops, but I, I really think we need to consider increasing this number. $50,000, if we put that to scale, for example, um, consider how much we give in just rent reimbursements for one business in the CRA. It ranges from approximately $30,000, could be more. Uh, and so, you know, let's have that discussion when the time comes, but we really do need to seriously look at increasing the fund for this because we want to maximize impact. And I'm not saying 2,500 is nothing, it's obviously something, but we want to make sure that this has a greater impact in the community. So I hope we have a conversation when the time comes. Thank you.
Um, John, I would, I like the, the $50,000 because this is, is taxpayers' money that we're giving away. Um, I really appreciate you doing the, the time and effort to have, uh, the coffee over business. Um, and I think that's something that we need to work on is, you know, finding the other avenues for this funding. Um, you know, we, I know that we're not in West Palm Beach, we can't go to the Knight Foundation, um, but to see, you know, through, whether it be Palm Beach County, State of Florida, or federal government, or, uh, major nonprofits, to see if we can't, uh, find more, uh, money from the different, uh, businesses and nonprofits and governments to expand it rather than from, uh, the, the taxpayers.
Absolutely. We can absolutely look into that and, and research that.
I would support that as well, Mayor.
All right.
It's a good idea.
And so, um, yes, Commissioner Romulus.
And for the sake of having a very clear and defined objective, can you please restate And for the sake of having a very clear and defined objective, can you please restate what the mission of this grant and this program is?
Yeah, so the, the mission of this grant is to help not solely fund an incubator, it is to offset the cost of a Boynton Beach business joining this incubator. There are, there are fees that go into that, so the, the city is looking to offset that so we can help businesses here who are starting in, in, in those early stages to help grow and expand. A lot of the times, some of the barriers they face is, is, is funding, writing a business plan, marketing, and a lot of times, they do need some assistance, and those incubators do give that one-on-one mentorship, whether it's with legal advice, marketing, financing, accounting, so it's really helping those businesses grow and expand. And then the working groups are really designed to provide the city with a report with a, a specific sector of entrepreneurs to, to kind of bring back to the city what the barriers those entrepreneurs face, and recommend initiatives that the city can provide to help them and, and support them, and grow them here in the city.
And so when does that phase come into place, when you're recommending initiatives that help support these businesses and get more of them off the ground?
So we, we have reviewed the, the working group reports for this fiscal year, and, David and I, as well as some other staff, are, are in the process of creating some initiative based off those reports.
Thank you.
Yep. And is there anything else from the commission? Because I'll open it up to any of the applicant grants that they'd like to say a few words to the board for next year. Yes, please.
They're completing this.
My name is Sheila Acevedo, I live in Delray Beach, and I'm the consultant for the Youth Initiative Project. I have copies just of some of the findings, but.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out to you, I have a twenty-eight-page report, which somebody has. Seventy-one youth responded to this. Of the seventy-one, sixty-eight percent of the middle school and seventy-three percent of the high school speak a second or, or even third language. That is rich. In addition to that, the youth knew what they wanted, and they were able to respond to the indicators for entrepreneurial, for entrepreneurship. The youth, all but four were, were in the categories to become entrepreneurs. Twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven of them were in the top realm of entrepreneurship, and they were very specific about what they want to do. However, when we went to the businesses, it didn't match. The businesses are, were either not interested in helping the youth, or they only wanted to help youth who were eighteen or older, or they needed more information. So for next year, I would please beg you to work on the businesses, because I also talked to the, the teacher who was here with her youth that did the mentorship there, and she says, "I can't get businesses to help sponsor these." And so we have these youth out there, ready to go, and thirty of them of the seventy-one wanted business skills, financial skills, human resource skills, leadership skills, but they have no one to teach them. They're not getting it. So please, please consider having a committee or a group work with the businesses, maybe have an incubator for mentorship for the businesses. And if you need a consultant, I'm available.
Nice plug.
Thank you for that finding, that's definitely informative.
Hi Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, I'll make this quick. Alan Hendricks, 122 Southeast Fourth Avenue. I'm super excited to tell you, I've opened a business in Boynton Beach. The name of it is Pride Tribe. It will start out as an ALF, it will grow to be services for elders, and so it's housing and services, and we may do an adult daycare, which is now up to three businesses, if you're counting. So I'm, I'm excited to report that, because it's, it's a, it's an endeavor of the heart, it's also a business, and I'm excited to do that here, because this is, this is home. I'm a talented man, I am a smart man, but I am not a business development man. So this has been essential to help me get this off the ground. So I, I thank you, and I, I encourage us to continue to try and grow jobs and businesses in Boynton Beach, because this will start small, and it'll grow to what it will grow to, but it will employ a couple of full-time people and a few part-time people and some consultants, and I could go on and on, but I appreciate your work on this, thanks.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah?
Have you decided on a specific location in Boynton? Is that forthcoming?
No, we're shopping, and, you know, this is where my heart is, but we are going to start with an ALF, and that'll have to be about, and it'll be for five people, and it will be, what can I find, at a reasonable rate and a safe neighborhood, and there's lots of little things, you know, ADA compliance and those kind of things. I will tell you that, one, two, three, four, and I just found one on my phone, that are located in Boynton. To further answer your question, we, we start with the, the Gay and Lesbian Community Center, which is in Lake Worth, and we work out. I can tell you, we're not moving to Wellington, or to some place too far out. And whatever we do, we'll be serving the greater Palm Beach community, so that was a very long way of saying, "I hope so."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, let me ask you a question. The lady spoke before, you was talking about reaching the, the youth. Are you all, who we're helping you, are you all helping with the youth and your endeavors? I'm just saying, your businesses?
Yes and no. We are focused on elders, we're most, most focused on LGBT elders in Palm Beach County. Now, that being said, one of the principles, the founding principles, something that I am adamant about, is not segregating our elders into someplace where they're segregated away from the, the general population. It's just not going to happen. So part of the program, and what they've done in the Netherlands and some other places, is have young people who are training to be nurses, or training to be in the healthcare field, or geriatrics, or something to that effect, bringing them into the, the mix, having them run programs while they're still students, or be care professionals while they're still students. And it kind of works out for the student, and it works out for the elders that are in your facility, if you will. So, no, I think is the answer to your question. But we, we are, we're adamant about keeping our seniors engaged in the larger community, which means young people as well. Does that make sense?
No.
I could explain it to you differently.
No, 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 you've explained enough. Thank you.
Doesn't make sense.
So we'll ask the, the next speaker, because there's a list lying behind you.
Thank you, guys. Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Russo with the Nineteen Oh Nine. I just wanted to thank the City Commission and the staff for helping us facilitate a really great program for the city of Boynton Beach. Specifically want to thank Mayor Grant and Commissioner Pincuga for coming out and helping judge the pitch night for some of the Boynton Beach participants, and of course, Commissioner Pincuga and Commissioner Romulus both reached out personally and were very intrigued about the process and about the companies, and made sure that we provided information to them. In short, you know, we had a really great program, we had some really great intriguing data points and outcomes that we've shared with the city staff, and speaking with Mr. Durgan before the meeting here, we're also going to follow up with him to look at 2020 and try and provide some more insight on what we learned, not only through the work, but also through the process, and hopefully give some more insight to staff on how we can best work and proceed. Of Nineteen Oh Nine's work in this past year, we actually supported fifty unique startup companies throughout Palm Beach County, all the way from Lake Park, all the way down to Delray Beach, and we just held last week this event, we dubbed Nineteen Oh Nine Fest, which we took all those fifty companies, and we whittled them down to our top picks, where out of all fifty startup companies we worked with this year, the second place of this event, this pitch competition for the, our entire year, was actually a company from Boynton Beach, a company called Premier Virtual, which is a tech startup staffing firm that now employs four people in the city of Delray Beach, or, excuse me, the city of Boynton Beach, and went through our program. So there were some really unique outcomes, and we all learned something from it, and hopefully we can give back to the city and the city staff and share our insights even more. But thank you again, and thank you to the commission and staff.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Annette Gray, 1500 Gateway Boulevard, here in Boynton Beach. I want to start with the conversation around our youth, and you knew I was going to come up here. I've been doing youth entrepreneurship in Boynton Beach, Delray Beach, Palm Beach County for fifteen years. There isn't a lack of programs around entrepreneurship for our youth, there is a lack of knowledge sharing. If you ask me right now, I can list at least ten to fifteen nonprofits that are providing some kind of leadership or entrepreneurship training for our young people. And so let's take what I do out of the picture. Workforce has a program where they put young people into businesses every summer for two months. They place them in businesses. This is not a new program. I have been placing youth in businesses for the better part of fifteen years. This is not a new program. So let's not get caught up on the fact that there isn't an entrepreneurship or leadership platform for our young people. Let's focus on putting together a guide and share knowledge and resources. Now, the language barrier is definitely an issue. I have worked with Louis Visant in Delray, they're now in Lake Worth. I do have teachers, business mentors, who speak the language and they are comfortable with. I have Spanish consultants that work with the young people. So it's not a lack of resources, it's definitely a lack of sphere of influence. So if you're in a particular neighborhood and community, or around a sphere of people who are not aware of programs, then that might be your perspective. So let's focus on sharing the resources that are here. Let's focus on being more vigilant, on making sure that everybody is aware of the programs that are available to our young people. Maybe we spread those through the schools. I know it's quite difficult to get information to the county and to have this, the information go home with the young people. It's a battle I have fought for the better part of fifteen years. So there is some truth in, in, in the findings, but I think there is a variety of diverse approach to remedying those findings without recreating the wheel. So that's the, the conversation around the youth component. As it relates to the program, we were funded to do, we didn't focus on youth for this set of dollars, but that doesn't mean that we didn't continue our youth, our youth programs parallel to this program. What I caution you is this. Incubation is not something that happens from June to October, when we were funded. I am still working with the twenty-seven applicants, because you don't just drop them, because this source of funding was from June to October. I still have a better part of twenty participants that I'm doing coaching with, writing the business plan, still structuring. That's another source of funding. So yes, you do want your, your grantees to have multiple sources of funding and sustainability. But I'll give you one quick example. We did a hundred and fifty hours of one-on-one coaching. Now, if you pull your calculator out and just do a modest rate at seventy-five dollars an hour, that was eleven thousand dollars. So we look for additional sources of funding alongside your grant dollars, but again, I would caution you about restricting the dollars to ten thousand dollars, because to move the needle with our businesses, you're forcing the grantees to stop the clock, which is not impactful and doesn't give you the economic development impact that you're looking for. I thank you, I appreciate your years of support. Have a great night. Yes?
I have a question. I'm looking at the list of results. I know one of your objectives was to try to help get women and minority-owned businesses certified with the county or with the district. Were any of your twenty-seven applicants, I don't see that on the list of results.
We held two workshops. So that's the thing about incubation, someone may come to us and say that they want to be certified, and they want to do business with the government, but you can't do that if you don't have an established business yet. And that leads to my point, that we are still working with some applicants on those things.
Thank you.
Good evening, it's almost morning, but thank you. I actually wanted to, I actually just wanted to come and say thank you for the opportunity of hearing our youth's voice and what their needs were, because a lot of times in the conversation, it's a bunch of adults talking about what you think youth need and want. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to, to have that conversation with our youth. Sheila did an awesome job of just kind of giving the highlights of what we found in terms of the youth experience, and Andre's going to talk a little bit about that, because he was actually in front of them, and there were some anecdotal comments and conversations that didn't show up in the, in the results, which I think are important. And in terms of the businesses, there were, the businesses that we did have, I'll tell you that the majority of them were interested, they just had never been asked, and so they didn't really know what it meant, and so they needed more information. So I, you know, just wanted to kind of put that out there, where there were some who were like, "Absolutely not," which is also a little troubling, because some of the students showed interest in those fields, or you said that they were interested in those fields. So I just wanted to, to say that, and now let Andre kind of continue.
Hello, everybody. Andre Thaddeus, Connect the Greatness. To be very clear, I interview and survey all seventy-one of the youth, and we use Boynton Beach High School, Congress Middle, South Tech Prep, and also South Tech High School. The one thing I want to be very clear, in Boynton Beach, we wanted to make sure we stayed in Boynton Beach with those students, because Boynton Beach still feeds Atlantic High School, the students are still going to Santa Lucius High School, they are still going to Park Vista High School, they are still going to Lake Worth Christian because of opportunities or perceived lack of opportunities in the Boynton schools, which I know is not true, because I meet with those students on a regular. Of the seventy-one students that we met with, surveyed and talked to, thirty-eight of them were in the three-three-four-three-five zip code. Those students are bright students, those students want opportunities, those students are asking for opportunities. And it was just ironic, when we came here, we met those young students, the three that were from South Tech. We didn't have that experience from our South Tech kids that experienced. As a matter of fact, they all stated, unless you're in the tech program, we don't get anything, and the community doesn't allow us, which includes the business. There were three young ladies I talked to specifically, there are seniors, and they are in the accounting part of their magnet, and they have never done an internship. They don't know what marketing, other than what's in their books. So they're very well-versed from the textbooks point of view, but they don't have the experience outside. So how do you know you want to be in business, if you only read about it? So those are some of the things that, in the graphs and percentages, you're not going to be able to see or hear unless you hear the students. And their voices were, it's like, "We are smart, we want to stay in our Boynton schools, we don't need to go to Atlantic, we don't need to go to Santa Lucius, we don't need to go to Park Vista, but we want to make sure we have opportunities." Boynton High School has a great medical program, they have a great personal training certification program, and they don't have any internships, other than when they're doing their clinicals in their medical building at the school. So I just wanted to be very clear to you guys, and also to the residents of Boynton Beach, that is what we found, and that is what we heard.
All right, thank you.
Thaddeus, wait, 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 before you go, come back.
Yes.
How, how do we get interns, and, 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 and the director of this economics development, while you're standing there, you could be thinking too, what I'm saying, how do we reach the kids that want to be reached? I'm just saying, we got businesses, I'm just saying, and when we, when we head to Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce, that was a great avenue, but I, you know, since it went to Boca, and now they got Boca-Boynton, I'm just saying, we lost a lot of things here for Boynton, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we get businesses to, to talk to you? You understand what I'm trying to say?
I absolutely do. I would love the opportunities to talk with the Chamber of Commerce, I would love the opportunity for the students to also talk to. Mayor, you mentioned coming back from Texas, and there is a YEC in Boynton, there was one. I was a part of it for years, I don't know what happened to the Youth Empowerment Center and those kids. So there are opportunities, I, I know the ones from Belgrade, West Palm Beach, River Air Beach. So that was a great part of those students getting support from interns, support from businesses through the YEC. So that was a great avenue for those students in the other cities. At the school, maybe have the, the community partners with the Boynton High School, South Tech High School, and have community partners. And Atlantic, I'm from Delray, taught at Atlantic, hey, Ms. Romulus, remember? So a lot of that stuff, they have that, they have that in place. The downtown Delray, those students are getting work, they're working at the banks, they're working at the, they're actually building homes with the Construction Academy. So they are doing those things, and the partnership is great. So if we can get that, community partnerships with the schools, I think that'd be a great help.
Okay, with the schools, okay.
I have a follow-up question for Ms. Thaddeus. I just had a non-related question, but something that we had talked about in the past. How's the program that we talked about going, is, is there any movement and traction on that?
Yeah, so, so the campaign that Ms. Romulus is talking about is called Changing the Narrative, and it's a part of our now, it's going to be incorporated into our marketing campaign. So we just, we just were awarded to be a participant in the Service Learning Project, and so through Nonprofits First, a group of business folks are going to take us on as a project, and we're going to incorporate that campaign piece as a part of the marketing that we're going to do, so it might look a little bit different, because we want to reach beyond, as you had suggested, beyond just the city, and just kind of reach into other cities, so more to come on that, we're working on it.
Sounds good, keep me posted.
Have not forgotten about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Of course, exactly, I'm ready to go home, too. Good evening, Dr. Angela Shuttlesworth of B Lead Grow, where I facilitated the discussion with the women entrepreneurs. Just to echo, working with you all's team members has been a lovely experience. In addition to their brilliance, they created a space for freedom to say, "Do what you do." And because we had very intimate, in-depth conversations, we talked about the unique barriers that women face in having to try to be everything for family and still face the same challenges that are placed on entrepreneurs. And so even though a lot of women wanted to attend the events, they spent, sent a lot of emails asking for, you know, "This is needed in Boynton Beach." We didn't even know this existed. But to even get the information to them was a challenge. So we went at the state level, county level, and as well as going down to look at what businesses were actually certified as women-owned businesses. So just creating that database of who were potential businesses, then to narrow down to those who identified as women-owned businesses, was a process in itself. And there was a lot of different data-sharing instances where the state couldn't provide X amount of information, because they didn't have the technical services. And so we even tried to work with you all staff. So it's not an easy task. So when he referenced around increasing the amounts, particularly for the work groups to do the in-depth data, if you want to actually market, to let them know that this is a project, those things take money. And if you want to facilitate conversations, generally, we want to incentivize participants in some kind of way. So yes, we did do the networking events. We provided food. And in partnership with Co-Work Boynton, Dan Demont offered up a membership for one of the members that we raffled off, and provided her with a month-long membership to be able to...because that was one of the barriers that she faced. And she has been active and has gotten a part of the community, and we're already seeing a result and return on that investment. So those type of things are going to be definitely beneficial when you all continue to expand that space in your new building. We just wanted to reiterate the importance of social capital as we talk about the funding, because they need that support of that unique peer-peer relationship, based on industry, but then also just as mothers and just as women as well.
And so I have a follow-up question. When you suggest that, or when you say that social capital is the issue, what proposal do you have in terms of how do we fix, or how do we even go about trying to make a dent in the problem?
It was simply time and space. They just needed a place to come and to hear somebody saying, "I get it." And that was the common denominator of, they didn't have that in their friendships, and their families attempted to serve in certain roles, but the things were, they didn't understand, because they weren't entrepreneurs. They didn't understand the sacrifice. A lot of people want to say, you know, "It's great, keep going," but they didn't understand the marketing conversation and/or going after leads, or the importance of, you know...unfortunately, people expect more from small businesses than they do for larger businesses. So you're going on more lunches, you're having to extend yourself in the nighttime to work on projects, and still being expected to go to PTA meetings, right? So it was literally just having that space consistently, right? So that, I may not be able to make it this month, but knowing that something exists that I can attend the next month is comfort in itself. And so whether that be virtual spaces or in-person spaces, but actually fostering real partnerships and ongoing relationships with women-owned spaces where they can just breathe. Because in our report, even a man showed up, even though it said, "Only for women-owned business." He was like, "I know it said that, but I just still wanted to come." And we were like, "That's very telling. Would a woman do that in a male-only space?" And so it spoke volumes about how a lot of spaces that are initially intended for women, they don't feel like they can breathe. So there's a lot of conversations that came up. You all have a lot of data to assist with the specifics. I mean, they gave a lot of information related to that, so, yeah.
All right. All right, good. Thank you very much. I will be brief. David Scott, Economic Development Director, Economic Development Strategy for the City of Boynton. Just to recap where we are today. We started this...thank you, Commission, for allowing us to start this program a year or so ago for $50,000. You allowed another 50 for the next phase of this project. And John kind of presented where we started. We started with two existing incubators and the work groups. The work groups were designed to provide us with those challenges and point those out, and you saw those today, and you heard from each of the cohorts. We have designed next year's, well, the upcoming year's incubators to address those issues. So rather than us coming up with those solutions, we are providing $10,000 towards an existing incubator, and these are the criteria with the data and the reports provided to the public that say, "If you're focused on women, these are the issues that we are aware have come up through these reports." So we will select whichever program it best fits and comes up with solutions and presents solutions to the city to resolve those issues. So, we understand that $10,000 doesn't buy us an incubator, but it does provide membership and services for local Boynton Beach business cohorts, for an existing incubator that already addresses these types of issues.
So, my question regarding the youth is that hopefully we can find an incubator that has the partnerships with the different businesses, so that we can do the career development in our youths.
Correct. And we also are looking at facilitating that as the city, and making sure that happens, because that came up in that report, as you just heard. And we understand that we serve a role here, Economic Development, and we need to be moving forward with some of these programs also.
Commissioner McCray?
Commissioner McCray.
In regards to the youth, have you already reached out to businesses? Not starting? Have you already...you already out there doing it now?
We're out there meeting with businesses now. We do the business over coffee. Now that this has come to light and come to our attention, we will be working with those businesses to establish those relationships with youth. I appreciate all of the conversations and all the information and data that we got, because it helps us move forward with new strategies. I just talked, Wally just came to me with the youth program that he has. Now we can work with Wally to really strengthen that relationship also, and bring businesses in. There's another program that we'd like to start, and we need to talk with the school system, which is bringing businesses into the school. To have a day where a business owner sits down with the school, with the youth, and talk about building those relationships. Bring world war, real-world problems to a youth group, and let them work with that youth group to resolve those problems, which teaches critical thinking skills, business skills, and also builds those relationships with local businesses. So that's something outside of the incubator that I think we'd like to pursue also. It really is building the youth, providing them with the entrepreneurship skills, and helping to grow those local businesses.
Right. I'm glad you were sitting here tonight to hear the same thing we heard, so hopefully next year we should see some results. That's all I need to say.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm sorry.
So, I like the idea, but I think it's more so the reverse, that I've heard multiple people say tonight is needed, where we want the students to be able to get out of the school setting and go into a...
Yes.
Brick-and-mortar business.
Absolutely.
And have the experience of punching numbers into a cash register and, you know, giving a business president...
That's absolutely where we're going.
That's what we want to see.
That's absolutely where we're going. It's all about mentorship and providing internships with businesses. That's where the youth go out, they learn, they'll go to get a job, whatever it is, but they are going out and getting into the businesses. The other reverse program that I just talked about was outside of these recommendations, but it is helpful for youth to come together within the school, and there are some programs out there that have been very successful. It's almost like a miniature shark tank, but it's in the school system. So the school is partnering and bringing businesses into the school. That's why I said I would like to have a conversation with the school system about setting something like that up.
David, for clarification, when you say mini shark tank in the schools, are you saying something like a business plan competition?
Could be a business plan competition. The programs that I've experienced and are familiar with are, the business owner goes in, "I have a real-world problem. Let's put together a group of youth," almost like bringing your workday, workday, bring a parent to workday. Instead, you bring a business to the school day.
And they present a challenge.
And they present a challenge, and then each different group works on that specific challenge, and they come together at the end, and then they select who has the best solution out of their groups. And it builds that foster relationship, the school, kids make new friends, and they also learn, like I said, those critical thinking skills. So it's a different program, and I'd like to present it at some future time, but I just mention it, because as we're dealing with youth, it's not only providing youth to the businesses, but there's also an opportunity to bring the businesses to the youth.
Mayor?
Yes.
On a different note, I just want to kind of bring this up, since we mentioned the chamber. What, if any, relationship do we still have with them, especially now that they're part of the Boca Chamber? And what can we do to rope them in more into these initiatives that we're working on to try to, you know, I mean, now that they're Boca Chamber, and I think they might have a little bit more funding to support, you know, some of the initiatives that we're trying to do here? So what, if any, action are we doing towards trying to create a better relationship and working relationship with them to try to help with some of these programs and issues that we're noticing?
Well, we do have a working relationship with the chamber. We talked to them about some of these youth programs. They have their own youth program. But I think there's a lot of room for additional conversation, especially since we now have these reports out, that we sit down with both Jonathan and Sarah and others...
And Trent.
...of the leadership, to talk about, this is where we're seeing in Boynton, specifically to, in this case, specifically for Boynton, and how can we partner to bring those businesses in. As we attend different business events and chamber events, we are having those types of conversations, and they are willing to partner with us.
Are you a member of the chamber?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
And David, are we also a member of the Central Chamber of Commerce for Palm Beach County?
That, I'm not sure.
We are.
And so, if we are, I want to know if you could reach out to them and have them come to the city commission's meeting and explain a little bit about what they are and what they're doing, how they can support Boynton Beach? Because if we're going south, we might as well go north as well.
Absolutely. Also, the Habitat has a Young Professionals Group, and they also are another partner that we could certainly leverage their resources.
All right.
Romulus, you're not boring me. It's not you.
All right. All right, is there any other questions or comments for our economics?
Commissioner, I just want to say, I'm so proud of this young man that made that presentation tonight. He did a great job.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Proposed Resolution Number 19-158, approve and ratify reopen articles of SEIU Blue Collar Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-159, approve and ratify reopen articles of SEIU White Collar Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item 11B, proposed Resolution Number 19-160, authorize the mayor to sign the Third Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for the CRA funding of the Neighborhood Officer Policing Program for fiscal year 1920 for an amount not to exceed $532,900.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-161, opposing offshore drilling activities including seismic airgun blasting. May have a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-161, opposing offshore drilling activities including seismic airgun blasting. May have a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Item 11B, proposed Resolution Number 19-160, authorize the mayor to sign the Third Amendment to the interlocal agreement between the City of Boynton Beach and Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency for the CRA funding of the Neighborhood Officer Policing Program for fiscal year 1920 for an amount not to exceed $532,900.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-161, opposing offshore drilling activities including seismic airgun blasting. May have a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Proposed Resolution Number 19-161, opposing offshore drilling activities including seismic airgun blasting. May have a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Consider rescheduling commission meetings that conflict with elections on March 17th, August 18th, and November 3rd of 2020. I would ask the city staff to come past us with alternative dates, rather than us making it available. I understand that we cannot do a doodle, so if you could come up...
The Wednesday, don't we?
With the dates available, yes.
We typically, in the past, have always just moved it to the next day, the Wednesday. So do you want to each take a look at your calendars? We can come back at the next meeting and see if that works for you, or...
That's fine with me. Anybody on the board feel, or commission, feel like that's going to be a hindrance?
I have no opposition, just moving it to Wednesday.
Okay.
All right. So we got consensus, and then bring it back so that we can vote on it, because I believe we have to vote on it. Next, what was it? Review and action on annual performance evaluation for the city manager. Do we have Julie here?
This is one I get sleepy on.
Power knot back there.
Good evening. Julie Oldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. Just by way of introduction, this is the commission's opportunity to provide our wonderful city manager with her annual performance evaluation. So, at this time, I would just turn it over to you for any comments that you all wish to make.
All right. Yeah, the one question that I have is regarding the increase. I know that we do that on an annual basis, but we didn't get, you know, the measurement of the other municipalities to put our city manager in line.
Okay.
We know that, you know, in Delray, where the commission's not as easy to work with as ours, they're offering, you know, $260,000 for the new city manager there. And so, you know, I'd like to get a, you know, just a spreadsheet of the different city managers in the area, like we did last year, to see how we can compensate our city manager. I was looking at the different evaluations, and I don't think she got below a four on any sort of category. I think you're doing an excellent job, and we look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you for addressing some of my comments. You know, we always can make things better, so...
Absolutely.
Except according to our vice mayor, he thinks you're Wonder Woman, so... So, thank you. No, it's there. So, yeah, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. What is the present salary of our city manager?
It is... Sorry, I don't have that exactly in front of me. It's a 200, 2,000?
200 and 200,700 and change.
Yeah, it's just over 200,000.
Okay. Let me go ahead and make my comment. In regards to comparing ourselves to Delray, I'm just saying, our tax base is not as high as the Delray. And I'm just saying, you know, I don't want to go ahead and start giving a city manager up there and the employees are not getting the same thing. I'm just saying, you know, we're going to be opening up avenues. And as this is my last time evaluating the city manager, it has been a beautiful six Sorry, I don't have that exactly in front of me. It's a two hundred, two thousand?
Two hundred and, two hundred thousand, seven hundred and change.
Yeah, it's just, just over two hundred thousand.
Okay. Let me go ahead and make my comment. In regards to comparing ourselves to Delray, I'm just, and our tax base is not as high as the Delray. And I'm just saying, you know, I, you know, I don't want to go ahead and start giving a city manager up there and the employees are not getting the same thing. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we're going to be opening up avenues. And as this is my last time evaluating the city manager, it has been, uh, beautiful six years. You know, she and I, we had disagreements, but then we started seeing eye to eye because she found out I was a no-nonsense person. I'm still a no-nonsense person. And I'm just saying in regards to giving out, doling out funds, we don't need to match any city. What we need to do is make sure that we be comparable so that we can keep our employees happy within this city. That's the way I will be voting. Thank you.
Anything, one else from the board or commission? Saying none? All right. Is there the, okay for the consensus for Julie to come back? I got a thumbs up. All right. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, legal. Proposed resolution number nineteen dash one six two approving the solid waste and charges for residential and commercial customers. May have a motion to approve.
Some move.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Um, just, didn't we do this already? What is this?
Do we do it every year?
I feel like we did it recently. So. This is the resolution adopting the rates that were removed out of the, in a pre-existing ordinance? Correct, Jim?
That's right. The ordinance allowed for fixing the rates by resolution, but at the time the ordinance was adopted, the rates were not changed. This is the follow-up. First resolution you're seeing pursuant to that ordinance to change rates. Yeah.
Come back up there. Since we heard so much bickering tonight about trash not being picked up, is there will be improvement in services?
Yes. Good evening, Davidson, Moniz team, uh, solid waste manager. Uh, there will be, uh, some improvement. Um.
A lot of improvement.
A lot of improvement. Uh, some improvement from the, yes, there will be some improvement from the beginning, but we are expecting to see, uh, a, a, a whole lot of improvements, um, uh, throughout, uh, the next couple of years, hopefully. Uh, what we did was, uh, making some changes from the existing code ordinance and streamline that, uh, service fee into the existing, uh, uh, solid waste fee schedule, which was adopted, uh, back in July.
While, while you're standing there, I'm going to go ahead and say this because it needs to be said. You, you all heard how the citizens beat up on us tonight about the services.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we don't feel good.
No.
I don't feel good. I, I'm just saying, you know, and we expect you all to help us out. I'm just saying, you know, we give you trucks. We give employees whatever they say they want. We work with the city manager, but I, I'm just saying, you all heard the night, you know, what, how they've jumped down our throats. They called our names. They did everything, but you know, tapped us on top of our heads. I'm just saying, you know, it don't make us look good. I'm, I'm just saying, so if y'all can kind of like go back to your groups and say, you know what, there's a lot of this grum, grum people out there and, and they're really bitching. They, they didn't say anything about the other districts on the west side of, uh, ninety-five, which, you know, it doesn't surprise me, but on the east side, Commissioner Romulus and myself, we do catch hell.
Yes. Uh, you hit it right on the mark when you mentioned that we, uh, do have the early set out issues. Uh, and we have the equipment. We have the personnel. We service the areas as scheduled and the areas that we, uh, have the most issues at, we are monitoring them closely and this process that we're implementing i- is going to, uh, help us a lot. Uh, we have the, uh, household, uh, loose trash also and the limited bulk pickup, uh, that we, uh, reinstated the, uh, three cubic yard limit now, uh, to be adopted, uh, with the new resolution. So that's going to help us a lot and, and, and hopefully, uh, in the next, uh, couple of years, we'll see a lot of improvement.
Okay. In regards to like educational wise, you know, hopefully you all are doing something, door hangers and stuff like that. I, I'm just saying perhaps if they understood their do's and don'ts, maybe this will help us. I'm, I'm just saying because it's not good. And when people call us and tell us about, you all did not do something. And we'd be saying, well, they did. They said, well, you know, hell, if it was on the west side of ninety-five, y'all would jump. This is what they tell us. And I'm just going to go ahead and say it tonight. If it's on the west side of ninety-five, y'all jump when they call. And I don't like hearing that. I'm like saying, you know, you don't have to jump when we call, but I like everybody in this city to be treated equal.
Yes, I, I agree with you and I've had, uh, multiple conversations with you. You called me, I jumped. Anybody who calls me, they know that I'm very passionate about customer service. That's my role as a manager and there's not one service that comes to my office, whether it's from the east side, from the west side, that I don't.
I understand what you're saying, uh, David, but I want you all to understood, stand how we felt tonight, you know, when the citizens, uh, they had legitimate complaints.
Mm-hmm.
I have legitimate complaints and they come to us all the time. And I'm just saying, when we're sitting up here representing and, and then, you know, we, we, we sit tall, then when they get through us, we're like this here almost. I'm just saying, you know, y'all just help us out. That's all I'm saying. And I'm through with the conversation for me.
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. Um, I think you hit it right on the head. Part of the problem that we have is in education of our, our, cause our residents. Um, a while back, we had a program, he, uh, the gentleman here mentioned that we had a code officer that used to reside in the solid waste division and that's all they did. They went around and they, they would hit, issue a warning tag. They would tag the piles, give the customers a warning. And if they didn't get it back, then we would, uh, hit them with a mandatory service charge. Uh, over the year, when, when we had some restructuring, that, that job was eliminated and that's when we've been suffering. So what we're doing with this program is reinstituting this, this charges, which will come through an education effort first, uh, in partnership with community standards. Community standards is our ally in this, in this operation. They're in the communities daily, looking at driving through those areas. So we've been working very closely with Adam on how we're going to implement this. So as soon as that we go through those areas, you're going to have customer, uh, community standards officers driving through those areas, issuing warning tags. We'll be doing that for the next thirty to forty-five days. And then after that, we'll start issuing fines. Um, they also will have the solid waste supervisor and, and some of the, uh, the crew leaders, our crew supervisors also going through those neighborhood as well. So it's going to be an all hands deck effort. It's going to take some time to re-educate our residents to make sure that they know how to properly put it out, when to properly put it out, how much to put out. So we, we're taking all that in, in consideration and we have very high expectations as this will be a success.
Thank you. Cause Delray, they issue fines. They do pass that warning stuff. They don't baby them down there. They say, you know, look, here's your ticket.
And, and that's exactly where we're heading. As soon as, soon as we give them enough notice, cause you know, we do want to make sure we do go out and try and educate somebody at first.
All right.
Then we're going to go into the fines.
Thank you all. Motion to approve?
Yeah. Commissioner Pinter, do you have a question?
I have a comment and, uh, and a suggestion for a possible amendment. Um, so first let me say that legal dumping is a problem for all of us. I have it in my district as well, particularly in minor road. But when we're talking about garbage and illegal dumping, let's separate out two different cases. One that is in residential areas and one that are in areas that have no lighting and not enough people to be around. That's the case with minor road. Now, in the situation of dumping in residential areas, what I hear and see is that there's lots of people throwing out countless couches and mattresses. I don't understand how some people have so many couches and mattresses.
With you.
Yes. Apparently they do. And they throw this out on days, uh, that they know full well, maybe they don't. Education, yes, is a big part of this. Um, on the bulk pickup days or not on the bulk pickup days, right?
No.
So I'm looking at the documents attached and I see that there's something called mandatory service charge. And let me just read what it says underneath. A mandatory service charge will be assessed for any bulk trash slash vegetation that is placed on the wrong service day or for loose household bulk trash, not bag or processed, which will require cleanup. And it says here that the service charge is fifty dollars. So the amendment I'd like to propose is that fifty dollars ain't scaring anybody, right? So yes, we should notify, we should educate, but what happens in the situation where you've already done that and they're still not complying? And so the recommendation I'd like to make is that we create a tiered system. So you educate, you notify. Yes, you begin with fifty bucks, but if they still are resisting for whatever reason, then maybe we should have a tiered system where we go from fifty to a hundred, a hundred to two hundred.
I, I don't think we can be punitive.
Yeah. I think, I think right now what we're, we're trying to do is reinstitute. This is actually already on the books. The fifty dollars is already there.
Right.
So we're just clarifying how it's going to run. And so I think that we're going to try and do this, uh, with the current way we do it. And if, if I, if it doesn't work, then we'll, we'll come back to you with a tiered. And this, and you, and you are correct that this is something that we will be reviewing annually, uh, our solid waste fees and bring it back to you with.
Andrew, just could you help me understand? You just said that you already have fifty dollars in the books.
So, so right now, though, when we did this back in July, our, all of our solid waste fees used to be set by ordinance.
I understand that.
So when we changed it, we changed it over to resolution.
Resolution.
Unfortunately, when we did that, we left that mandatory service charge and special pickup was still in the ordinance. So this actual resolution is just taking it from the ordinance and putting it on our, on our fee schedule. And so to also to, to speak to what you're saying is, so if somebody puts out something, we can also do special pickup. So for the fifty dollars, we're only going to pick up what's the maximum amount of?
Three cubic yards.
Three cubic yards. So if it's over that, then we could hit them with a, a special pickup process as well. And we could have them fined and make them pull it back in.
So you're saying that certain people may be charged a hundred twenty-five dollars for the mandatory service charge and a special pickup charge?
We may handle, if they put, let's just say they put the whole street up. We may go through community standards and say, all right, they have, they have to twenty-four hours to pull back what they have, or we're going to assess this special pickup charge as well.
So that's, that's my question is, is that why would anybody call for the special pickup if it's only fifty dollars for them to do the mandatory pickup charge? That's kind of where, you know, I'm confused that where, do we want, you know, I'm sure we want people to notify us that there is, uh, that there is a special pickup charge because otherwise anybody can just dump it out and say, oh, it's going to get picked up anyway and it's cheaper than, uh, calling in a request.
Yeah. Um, we, we could change it to, uh, to seventy-five to be the same so that there's, it's, the, the, there's no discrepancy, but, um.
So, so because we're doing this for the first year, I kind of want to make it would be instead of being both being seventy-five, that both be fifty. And we'll see how that works so that we'll see how many people actually called it in because that way they don't get hit with community standards.
Well, seventy-five is the minimum charge.
Yeah.
Seventy-five is the minimum charge for a special pickup. So what we do is we go out and we actually evaluate how much is there. And so it could be a two hundred dollar charge for a spec, special pickup. Just depends on how much trash is there.
It doesn't matter whether they call it or not.
Yeah.
So, and that's the other thing. If we don't explain how we charge above seventy-five, I don't think it's valid legally.
Yeah. Let me see if I can understand that question because I think there's a, yeah. I think the question you're asking is, is if, if somebody goes by and there's those early set out and it's a large pile, what are the charges? Well, the first thing you do, of course, you warn them. But once it gets to the point where you're going to charge them, it's a fifty dollar charge. And I believe then it's whatever it costs us to then pick it up if it's oversized. It's fifty dollars if it's the standard size, right? And then oversized is the extra fee. So you can add them together. We can bring back other options as we, so today is cleaning up the ordinance. That's what we're asking to.
Yeah.
Clean it up and then bring back some additional options on the, and there's a presentation coming up on item C. So some of this will be explained in that.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, getting a little ahead of ourselves. But yeah, I think we can do both. It really is what you want, you direct us to do on fees. If you want us to have a tiered penalized system as you get more and more, or if you want to increase the amount of the minimum charge, because it's still going to go up based on the size of the pile.
So, so, yeah, I, it's, it's.
Is that your, I think that's the question you're asking.
No, I'm more, yeah, it's, it's almost there. The, the question I'm asking is, is that the ma, you know, the special pickup charge, item C, and this mandatory service charge, item E are different charges, correct?
Correct.
And so if we, there's a mandatory service charge, is there going to be a special pickup charge? If.
So the way it's going to work, if you put out, let's just say you put out within, under the three cubic yards.
Yes.
You're already paying for that on your, if you, if you didn't put it out on your Tuesday and you put it out on Wednesday, you're already paying for it. Now you're going to pay a fifty dollars on top of what you normally pay with your utility bill. So you, you already pay for a certain amount of bulk pickup. This is an extra pickup that we're doing that's within the parameters. If they put out ten cubic yards, we would then work with community standards and we may pick up the, the minimum requirement should be three. After that, they would either have to pull it back or we start a case.
So.
Or they would be required to do a special pickup, which would be additional.
And do we list how many, how much we charge per cubic yard?
Typically, uh, it's either three cubic yards or six cubic yard. Uh, it goes nine some municipalities.
So, no, so basically special pickup charges, construction debris over a cubic yard, large stumps, trunks, non-scheduled charge of pickup has a seventy-five dollar minimum fee.
Yes.
So if it is two cubic yards, what do we charge?
Well, it's within the limits. So there's no cost because the resident is within the three cubic, either below the.
That's kind of where I'm confused at is that how can you say there's a minimum if you don't explain how you charge for more versus, oh, if there is ten cubic yards, why would it be a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars? How do we explain to, you know, how do we charge a minimum? How do we go over that is kind of where my question is, how does the, our sanitation department charges by the cubic yard?
Well, typically it, it goes by the, uh, dump fee that the driver receive, uh, receives for that load. Uh, if the driver services, for example, every day we have call in the office, hey, I need a special pickup. Supervisor goes out, we, he does what we call a side survey and then he tells the person, hey, it'll be a hundred bucks. And the person say, okay, fine. Now, with the new resolution, if the supervisor goes out there and then he, we have evidence that there was no, there was nothing at the curb side after service, then there will be a fifty dollar mandatory service charge applied to.
So I think the real question you're asking is, we, we have a certain rate that we pay from the solid waste authority.
Correct.
That we get charged per ton. And so we know what that number is and that's what we pass on to the residents. It would be on top of the seventy-five dollars. So if it's, let's just say it was ten cubic yards, we give them the seventy-five includes up to three or, or is a special pickup, then we would do whatever the difference is times forty-three dollars and that's how we would calculate that total.
Because, you know, it's different for couches and cabinets versus landscaping material. And so do we have that in our ordinance or?
Not in our ordinance. It's, we, we have a contract with solid waste authority and we go direct rates.
You know, we're, I'm saying it for the people that unless we have it here that says we charge forty-two dollars, what we get charged, it doesn't seem that right that we are passing on a charge that the people don't know about. That's not written down because pretty much all of our other charges are written down. And so that's, the, the whole thing is that for item C is that if we're, if we tell them what the minimum charge is, that's great, but we need to explain to the, the public what's over the minimum charge and how we charge it. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. Yes.
Okay, good. Cause I was hoping we would. Yes. Commissioner McCray, you've been holding your hand up.
Yes, and got tired too. My, my take is that I'm, I'm with Commissioner Pinter because first of all, you have the landscaping people and, and if you're just going to charge fifty dollars, it's cheap for me to go do my landscaping work and put it out and, and let you all pick it up instead of me going to the landfill, you know, up the solid waste. So I, what you all are doing is working. I, you know, I don't, I'm not going to get barged out and cubed and all this stuff. I'm just saying do what you've been doing, but keep it so that them people in the landscaping business, it don't be easy for them so that they have to go up to solid waste themselves and get rid of their own load.
Hmm. Right. Yes. Commissioner Pinter.
If you could just help me understand, what do we currently do for people who are repeat offenders? What, is it, is there a system in place? Do we, what do we do in that situation? What's the same people constantly violating, constantly dumping out garbage in the?
So currently the way it works, and this is one of the reasons why we want to change the system is we would then work with community standards. They would create a, a case on them for, for putting it out early. They would give them so many days to resolve it. Let's just say it was seven days. They wait the seven days. It comes back to their bulk trash day and this is a vicious cycle. And that's why we have to have these mandatory service charges so that if somebody's seen doing it, it can be immediately charged. And the reason we're using mandatory service charges is that we're staying away from fines. It's not really a fine. This is what we're charging them to actually pick up the, the actual bulk trash on that day.
And that's why that we're getting the complaints. Why are you leaving it there and you're not picking it up and it just sits and sits? It's because it's a code case and it, we don't have the ability to find and pick up because that's.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Is find and pick it up immediately versus write a code case, give them ten days to correct.
So.
Then you go back and then you, you know, and it's the due process that the, that's the system we have now.
So, so we're going to. That's exactly right. So we went to a tiered system where you, let's just say it was going to be a hundred, a hundred, fifty dollars for the first, as if it was a fine system, it'd be fifty dollars and a hundred. You would have to give them some due process. So we couldn't just go and pick it up and show up, put it on their water bill. You would actually have to give them, let's just say it was forty-eight hours.
Understood. So.
That's why, that's why we steered away from a tiered system and, and we can resolve, I think we can update our ordinance as far, or the resolution later to add the fees as far as how the, how the special pickup is calculated.
My concern is for the people who ignore us.
Absolutely.
So the, if I'm, if I'm correct, is that the, our sanitation department's going to pick up the, the trash and not go through community standards.
Correct.
Because we're charging a mandatory service charge and that way we're giving our community standards more time to go do a bunch of other things rather than looking at trash piles.
Right. So the only ones that will not actually pick up, if we don't have a mechanism to charge them, which means a utility count. So if there's a uni, a utility account on that actual, that we could hang the charge on, then they'll get, we'll go ahead and pick it up and hang the fee. And community standards is only going to pass along the documentation to us and hand the documentation to the resident.
So if it's a vacant lot, who doesn't have?
We'll have to go through the.
Community standards.
Yeah, the lean process.
If it's a single family home or a multi-family home, they each have a utility bill and we can go.
Right. Anybody who's got a utility bill will get assessed that charge right away.
Okay.
And so you could accrue, let's just say you did it four times in one month, you could have a two hundred dollar charge on your, on your.
So, and it's, the, uh, the other aspect of it is, is that if someone hires a landscaper and the landscaper goes whenever they, they feel like it and it's not their bulk day the next day, they're going to get hit that extra fifty dollars.
Correct.
For that landscaper not picking up their own fee.
Extra.
Right.
Yeah. So it's fifty dollars plus any of the extra that they.
Or we could require them to pull it back. Make them pull it back.
Well, no, no, no. So that's, that's the whole thing.
We're talking trash tonight. Go ahead.
So that's, so like, let's say it's, you know, during, um, you know, our hurricane season that starts in June, I saw in my neighborhood, people had well over, you know, three cubic yards out there. It got picked up without any extra charges, I believe.
Correct. Cause we don't have a limit right now. That's the other thing that we're implementing with this is right now there's no, it's unlimited. There's unlimited bulk trash or vegetation. There are no limits. So that one is, that's the other thing. We used to have limits and now they were putting out limits and that's, that's another key component of this.
So we're going to get some complaints.
We're going to get some complaints.
Okay.
Davidson's going to be pretty busy for a little while.
Different kind of complaints now.
So we're going to get complaints from people that have done it all the way, you know, for the, lived here the, the 60-plus years and, and so.
It'll be an education process. We're going to have some bumps and bruises and we'll have to, we'll have to deal with some kind of mechanism on how people pay their utility bill because we added $200 to it. But I think we'll be able to work that off.
And like, if they don't pay their total utility bill, are we going to try to shut their water off now too?
So, yes, if it's on the bill and it's not paid in full, they go onto the shut-off list. Now, we have mechanisms that you've adopted several, three or four years ago, that there's options for them if they can't pay it all, they can do a payment plan, there's a lot of things. But again, going back to your question is, is this is after education. They're not getting a fine the first time, but these are the people that continue to do it after they've been told not to do it.
So my.
Oh, they are going to have to pay, but we can work it out so their water doesn't get turned off with payment plans, things. But if somebody completely ignores us, that's exactly what will happen.
And some of our biggest problems are, and we hit it right on the head, rental property.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's rental properties, yes, and.
We had one rental property that specifically Davidson was there, actually picked up trash himself, um, with the, with the trash crew, because it was after, it was like 6 o'clock when we got the notice. We went on a Monday, or they were scheduled for a Monday. Tuesday they put it out, we had to go back and pick it up. Wednesday they put it out, we had to go back and pick it up. So these are the type of problems that we're trying to resolve. Those, that would have been three $50 charge, or two $50 charges right on that owner's utility bill or the tenant's bill that would have got paid.
Okay, so I'm definitely grasping it. Really appreciate all the, the work that you guys have put into this, explaining to us. And I guess you're going to be working with Eleanor to try to explain it to the, the residents of Boynton Beach, so.
Yeah, I think we're going to be doing, my intent is to try and, we're going to do some video PSAs type of stuff.
Yeah.
Put it out on social media, um, there's some different things that we're going to work on.
I'd like to see, you know, kind of almost, you know, start of January, kind of that monthly PSAs from the sanitation department. Because, I don't know, you know, you guys don't, do you guys have a Facebook page?
No.
So.
Good.
I mean, you want to join the cities because I know.
We do all our stuff through, through Eleanor, she likes to centralize our social media.
I'd, I'd see if you can join onto the utilities Facebook page because if you're on their bill, that would make sense.
Sure, absolutely.
And so, in that way, people don't have to join an extra Facebook group.
And, and I think, you know, the other part is going to be Davidson's going to have to go out into the community and go to the, meet with the Forest Park Neighborhood, HOA, go with these different HOAs and, and do some ground, boots-on-the-ground work as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Romulus.
Right. So, um, you know, I don't want to name the particular location, you all know what I'm talking about. So, how does, because it's not, it's not a residential, single-family home, it's a apartment complex. So how, how does this work on them?
If, so if they have an individual meters, it would be a little bit more difficult to try identify whose unit it was. But a lot of times, when we have a, a apartment building, it's one meter, so it would go on that one meter.
So basically, you're.
That, all the residents who live within that building would have to work, figure out how they're going to pay that, you know, an extra charge on the bill.
So the bill is going to go to the, the unit owner, or not the unit owner.
The property owner. A lot of that time, the HOA is the, has the meter.
So, so the condo associations, you know, for example, let's say Sterling Village, on, like, they're, you know, doing that. So if someone just has a bulk, you know, mandatory service charge, people just put it on there and you pick it up, that means the whole community would have to pay for it.
Well, it's by building, typically those are like by building.
Those are on call, Sterling Village and all those.
But the example is, yes, the example of if it was a.
They don't have that issue in those areas because they on call, they go on Tuesdays and they usually call and say, we'll have.
I, I picked a, area that you don't have a problem with, for that reason.
Right, right, that's, that was the point. We're trying.
But, uh, just say a four-apartment building that has, they have one water meter, if it was unit one that did it, the, all four units would get charged. They would, the owner, however they divvy up the bill, would have to figure out how they're, either assess them all and equally, or they figure it out.
Okay.
It puts the hand, it puts the owners on the property owner to make sure they're doing what's right on their property, whether it's a rental or whether it's a.
Property owner and.
Home state property.
And the association.
Correct.
Okay. And so, um, I believe we have a first and second, it's been a while. Um, and, uh, and I.
No.
We don't?
No, we were waiting.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work.
Andrew, can you please call me in the morning?
Sure.
Thank you.
You haven't had enough of this tonight?
So we're doing, uh, proposed ordinance 19-043, first reading. Jim?
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the abandonment of an FPNL utility easement within the Ocean Breeze East Development located at 100 Northeast 7th Avenue, applicant Louis Swayze, Ocean Breeze East Apartments LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida and providing an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
I just want to tell staff and everything in regards to Ocean Breeze East, uh, they even got almost every tree from over there, looking good, go ahead.
They got rid of all the trees?
Almost, I'm guessing.
All right. Um.
May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensarga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19-040, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending chapter 10 of the city's Code of Ordinances, garbage, trash, and offensive conditions, Article 2, Refuge, Garbage and Trash, Section 1023, definitions in Section 1024, Single-Family Residential Refuge Collection, clarifying mandatory service charge to curtail illegal dumping, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
I'll move.
Second. All right, now you have a presentation?
Please don't.
No. I mean, could you?
I, I.
Tell it to us?
I'm sorry. We just covered those.
I, I.
Yeah, yeah, we, we typically went through the whole presentation, so I'll quickly show you the slides and.
Yes, please.
Every single thing that we just talked about, pretty much.
This is the second reading and we didn't do it the first time.
You could save it for third reading.
No.
I won't even.
That's illegal.
Yeah, as you heard earlier, these are the three major issues that we, we had some excitements about earlier from those residents and, and we are excited tonight to, that we are addressing them and then hopefully we'll see some changes.
You sound excited.
Soon, yes. Uh, this is just a picture of an early set-out at the curbside and as we all know, it's not only a bad image for the community, but also it, it sets our operations back for the drivers and, and, and they, they typically not good for the community, as we all know, so, um, we, we have a picture of a loose household bulk trash. Typically, when a driver gets to a location like that, he has to take at least 10 or 15 minutes, if not more, because sometimes we get bigger piles like that to service it. Not only we have to service what's there, but also we have to clean up our, after ourselves. So that's also, is going to be under the mandatory service charge. Unlimited bulk pickup, we talked about it earlier also, uh, the most important aspect of that part is the three cubic yard limit that we're bringing back. Because when you have unlimited bulk pickup, it not only, it, not only it attracts illegal dumping, but also it gives contractors and landscapers the opportunity to just come in your city and, and dump stuff because there's no limit.
Oh, stay there, go back, 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 back up.
Yes.
That looked like that trash pile is too close to their house.
Uh, actually, it's too close to the mailbox. We, actually, I think this went also on what we call the problem list because the driver could pick up part of it, but not the whole thing.
Can you go back?
Yes, uh, sorry, this.
So there's a couch on the end, is that enough space?
Yes, there was a couch also. Uh, they did a great job not putting on top of the veg, but usually you get all of that stuff together.
And so, if it's within the one cubic yard, you can have mixed piles, but if it is not within one cubic yard, it cannot be mixed?
Yeah, if it's under one cubic yard, usually it's, uh, it falls under what we call miscellaneous, it's just not that much, but if it's more than that, then it'd have to be separate.
So if you have more than a cubic yard of veg, vegetation, then it has to be separate?
Yes.
And then what happens if you have two cubic yards of vegetation, one cubic yard of miscellaneous? Is that legal as well for a bulk?
Well, I'd say now it's not together, yes, it's.
On the same day?
Yeah, it falls.
So if you have.
Within the guidelines, I'd say.
So if it's, so anything, as long as it's under a total of three cubic yards?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whether it be two vegetation or one cubic and, but if it is two cubic of miscellaneous, then that will, has a special charge?
No, there won't be a special charge for it.
So it's three cubic yards for miscellaneous as well?
As well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, the proposed changes, we talked about it, about them once again earlier, so I don't need to go through the whole reading again. So the only thing I would add to that is that we have the MyCivic app now that's going to help us a lot. When the drivers go to an area, they're going to take a picture, it's going to be geocoded, it's going to come straight to the office. We want to use what we used to call the early set-out log. It'll be electronic on the computer, the person calls in, hey, my address is 132 Northeast, whatever that address might be, and then we punch it in and then we see if there's a problem. And in all the pictures, we'll also be there and, and documented with that address showing the violation.
Use an address on the west side of town, not the east side, to my 132, no idea.
Um, and this is one of the tags, what Andrew likes to call door knockers. We will put one either at the person's location or on top of the pile, wherever it could be visible enough for the person to see that we put a notice of violation for, for that trash pile and then detailing what the violation was and what needs to be done. This is an example of what three cubic yards should look like. If I would describe it, I'd say you can take three giant steps to the left or to the right and one step backwards, sounds like we're dancing. And then, and then you'll have huge space for three cubic yards. It doesn't really usually look nice like that, but that's what it is. Yes, once we have all that completed, solid waste and community standards, we will get together and start up the violation process. But prior to that, we will do the PSAs, we'll get with Eleanor and we'll let the customers know when they call the office also. And then I think one of the most important thing is when you meet the customers in the field, when we have an issue, respond to it and then we let the person know also there have been some changes. So I think that's going to have a major impact on educating the customers of the changes that we have made. And I think you've went through all that, the $50 bill, $50 on the utility bill, so I don't want to torture you guys going through all of it. Okay, obviously, we've had the first reading last month, tonight is the second reading for the resolution. Tomorrow, if that is adopted, we will update the fee schedule and then the rest of the schedule, as you could see here, we'll start the outreach process and let the customers know. We'll give them a 30-day grace period and, and then once that all done, we'll start in February.
All right. You should get your first calls on the day after that.
Oh, good. Valentine's Day.
That's exciting.
So, Davidson and Andrew, thank you so much for all this. And then, you know, my only concern is that for the, the special pickup, to explain why someone would be charged more than $75.
Yes, and you just reminded me of one last thing. We will, we started working with Laura, actually, from Eleanor's office to put some stuff in the pamphlet that's going out every year to the customers.
Mm-hmm.
With some detail of that service fee also, explaining to them what's coming and what it is and we'll put all that detail on there also.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to applaud staff for, for getting around to doing this. Um, yeah, I share the concerns about noticing residents that either were, were changing, you know, law and ordinance, or were enforcing it in the manner that we hadn't enforced it in the past, even if that was how it should have been. This is one of those things that if you move to this city, whether you own or rent, within one or two trash cycles, first of all, the first thing you find out is what the trash cycle is, so you put your trash on the first day. I've rented many places in South Florida since I moved here for college, I own a place. That's your responsibility. And then if you don't do it right, you figure it out literally the next day because the trash did not get picked up. And if you're responsible, you take it back and then you sort it out and you, you put it on the appropriate day. So with the warning system that is being implemented through this, um, I fully expect people to complain about it, but as long as we notice them, it's, to me, it's like the red light cameras. You might not like that you get a red light ticket, but there's very little excuse that you didn't understand that you shouldn't have done that. So having a warning system in place, noticing the residents, that there's no other solution to this. There's no other way to get people not to break this rule other than to, to tax them on it. And if they violated a rule, then it's fair to do. And I think residents who don't violate the rule will be happy that their neighbor or that person down the street who never adheres to it is going to pay a financial price for it now. So I, I think it's a great mechanism and it's, it's one of these things where if you follow the law, it will never affect you, which is a great thing. So I applaud staff for approaching it, I think it's a great first step in addressing some of the concerns that were voiced at the beginning of the meeting and I hope that, that those residents see the, the positive consequence of implementing this and hopefully are satisfied with the, the improvements that will come.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, staff. This was long overdue, much appreciated. I know a lot of it came from personal experience in District 3 and probably along with District 2. So thank you for getting this done and, you know, Molly's comment after that is, it took you guys long enough.
It did.
And you're talking trash.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second?
I don't know. I moved if we didn't.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensarga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19-041, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Part 2, Chapter 15 of offenses miscellaneous of the Code of Ordinances in Chapter 1, Article 1, General Provisions, and Chapter 3, Article 1, Overview of Part 3 of the Code of Ordinances, i.e. the land development regulations. Declaring that when there is a conflict between the measures of a chronic nuisance correction action plan and the land development regulations, the measures of the chronic nuisance correction action plan shall prevail, providing for codification, severability, conflict, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is five oh.
Ordinance nineteen oh four two, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida approving the partial abandonment of three separate platted utility easements within their Cortina PUD plat as part of the Alta Cortina Development Project Development located at one one zero zero Otis Avenue in Boynton Beach Village and Town Center, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Second.
Discussion real quick.
Yes. So I spoke to the city manager and I didn't get a chance to speak to Andrew Mack today, although he was available, I just didn't get back to him regarding the issue with the dog park in this area, didn't pop up on the agenda, but I don't know, Andrew said he might be able to summarize, he went to a meeting, what he learned.
Sure, so after the meeting, we reached out to the POA, who is the responsible party for maintaining the dog park. And so we had a very positive meeting with some of the board members there from the POA. They recognize that there's an issue and we, they are working on a corrective action plan right now. We had a meeting with their property manager and they're going, they're putting forth a correct, a plan to correct the landscaping that's decayed and come up with a plan on some retrofits there to help with the maintenance. The other thing we're doing is we're gonna solidify an agreement between the city and the POA to make sure that we delineate exactly what the expectations are of the POA and the city. Because this is a private, it's kind of a P three, the way we did this project, I think we just need some better ground rules to set with them, so that's what I'm working on right now. I'm preparing a document to provide to the legal department who will then craft around it a development or an agreement that I'll present to the POA, which will go to them for approval, then we'll come back to you as well for approval. But they, they recognize that the dog park is an asset to them. You know, obviously, the residents that live by in those nearby apartments and the actual, the commercial shopping center is also, he felt like it was, because he's a part of the POA as well, that it was an asset and that they should be, they have neglected what they were supposed to be doing. Part of that is, you know, their property manager is not out there on a daily basis and as well as their landscape, so the follow-up behind the landscape vendor was a little bit off, which has caused some of that. And the other thing we talked about was the possibility of some retrofits within the park, because right now you have three dog areas, we're gonna add another fencing on the south side dog area, so we'll create four, so that we can have one, the biggest thing with the grass there is the rotation of the sod, so we're gonna be able to close one area down while the other one's open and we'll rotate it and we'll put it on a schedule. So one month, one to close and the other ones open. So we'll always have these one area open at all times and that way the maintenance will go down and the grass will have a chance to recover. So there's a lot of things that are being implemented, I'm working with them right now and I expect to have something back to you here after the first of the year.
So first, I appreciate you attending that meeting and bringing us back that information. Second, yeah, I think they, it's undeniable that, you know, it's a neglect.
Yeah.
And if you drive by that place, and I live right, you know, on the other side of the canal in Renaissance Common, so I drive by it half a dozen times a day, it feels like it, it's busy all the time, so it is, it is only gonna get busier because half of the residents haven't even been built yet in the Cortina. Yeah, they need to do better. With regards to potentially splitting the large dog run, I would request, as long as nobody objects, that before that decision were ultimately made, that some sort of, you know, blueprint or whatever site plan would be presented for observation, because I can tell you from experience that if size of the dog run is important, especially for large dogs, and if you cut that in half, even though I get the rotation idea, it, having a big area is what makes it, that's why Lake Ides is an awesome place, that's why John Prince Park's dog park, the smaller they are, the less likely you're willing to go there because the dogs get, they're jammed up on each other and then you don't want to be there if your dog gets skittish or whatever, so that if they cut that in half, it will, it will be to the detriment of the park. So I'd just say, present that for observation, not that it requires our vote, but I'd like to.
Yeah, we won't, we won't, we won't make any implementation, we'll have the, the agreement will come back to you and I can bring in at that time any changes that we'll make to the park, so you're made fully aware. The other, the other thing that the POA basically told me was, you know, obviously, they didn't understand the full dynamic of what they were getting into. I know the maintenance of a dog park is a pretty large undertaking, I think that just kinda is what was, what, you know, they hired a normal landscape vendor where you really need some specialized skills and their vendor isn't here every day. So they were even looking at replacing the vendor with somebody that the city uses and, you know, contracting with them directly that they actually have experience maintaining a dog park. So there's a lot of specialty skills, like what kind of pesticides, you know, all those type of things go into it. So we're definitely on the right track, just, we'd ask for another, like I said, I think I could bring you something in the first meeting in January.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I will not be here at the second meeting in December, so.
Okay.
Hey, I mean, okay.
Alright. So any further discussion, any from the audience, may I have a roll call, please? Was there a roll call?
Was there a motion?
Was there a motion? Thought there was. If not.
Yeah, because.
It's confirmed. Alright. Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Clarification, what am I voting on?
The easement abandonment.
The easement amendment.
Oh.
Nineteen oh four two.
Okay.
Cortina.
Yeah, it's not the dog thing.
He lost me, because I thought we were done with that item. Okay, yes, sorry, it's late.
Alright, and.
And Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Vote is five oh.
And board, two things on, or a few things on future agenda. I spoke with Mike Russo, he had a, you know, a bill regarding septic tank inspection. I don't necessarily know how much of the people in our water utility that we could inspect their septic system because we deal with stormwater, but I'd like to see if our attorney or utility department can look in to see if we can do some septic tank inspections.
Yeah, I don't. We'll break it.
Okay. The second thing for the new item would be is that I just saw, read in the Palm Beach Post regarding the thirty million dollar bond issue that West Palm Beach is doing for their Parks and Recs Department. You know, the fact that we got the penny sales tax, we've been able to improve the parks after the neglect from the recession, but as we noticed in the downtown playground area, we're looking for private develop, private sponsors to put their names on it, not necessarily the city of Boynton Beach. This is in regard, you know, in addition to the Girl Scout Park, the Leisureville Park, the Eco Park, and other parks that are in and out throughout our city. And so I am here to, to engage you to see if you're willing to give the people an option for a Parks and Recreation Bond, including the parking for the north parking garage of our downtown. And so I don't necessarily want to know if, I just want you to think about it and maybe we'll have a vote on it next time to put it on the future agenda, because I need to know if, you know, I don't think we would want to put it on the March election, I think we would want to put it on the November election, so that we get the full, full amount of our population voting. And the last, and so you have a.
Yeah, but I, my hands are going, if you look down here, because I'm just saying you're talking about a bond and charging people, yes, would you, come on, pay attention.
Yeah. And then the other things is, is that for the future agenda items, the sale of the Nichols property, I'd like to see back up there, because that's still part of our future agenda. And then also.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Sale of the Nichols property west of the mall? You know, I don't, you know, it's still to be determined when we get back, but it's still a future agenda item. And then also, I've made the request and the board approved for a Vision Zero policy.
Yeah, we have staff attending the workshop, so until, their TPA is doing that, and then we're gonna, because you asked us to prepare a resolution to consider being, becoming a Vision Zero city, correct?
Right, yeah.
And that's the item that we need to learn about first.
Yeah, and so I wanted it on the future agenda, though.
We'll do that.
So if we, if you don't come back in December, that, I still know that it's.
Put it out there.
Is that it's, and so Commissioner McCray?
Yeah, let me go back and, and this bond thing, you just spoke about it, you're trying to fly over it. Okay, you said about the Parks and Recs, a thirty million dollar bond?
Not ours. I said that there is a West Palm Beach one and they've been doing it for about twenty years.
Okay, you're not trying to bring a bond here, are you?
I am asking, yes, I am, because I want to see.
What?
For all the Parks and Recreations.
Sir, sir.
Excuse me, no, no, if you let me finish, because we have an Eco Park, we have our downtown park, we have Leisureville, and we do not have the funds in our general fund to build everything. And so we have the options of our general fund to maintain it, but not to do both. And so I want to make sure that our residents have the option to build the best Parks and Recreation in Boynton Beach, including a youth empowerment center, because we don't have one. And that's an option that I'd like to give to our residents, and if they say no, that's fine, but I think we should have that option available. And yes, I'll finish, I'm finished.
Good. Make it after the March election, if even for discussion, because I'm just saying, we just hit the citizens with a one that's penny sales taxes, and I'm just saying, you know, you know, I don't know how much people think that, you know, you can keep going to the same well, you know, and keep drawing water. I'm just saying, you know, we've been bumping along, when things come up, let's fix them, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be out of office anyway, but I'm just saying, you know, we be killing the citizens in Boynton with these taxes, I'm sorry.
Alright.
And you can bring it up all you want to.
Okay, yes, Vice Mayor.
I do support Board Member McCray's request that it wait till after the election, because there's the potential, well, there, there will be turnover because he's termed out, and I would want to make sure that whoever fills his seat has the opportunity to weigh in on that as a newly elected representative for District Two. I'd also say that I have no problem supporting a conversation about it, but I would not be in support of, I guess it would be at the time, I would not be in support of voting on anything in the course of one meeting.
Oh, yeah.
So I have no problem with the discussion.
And so that's.
After the election, but I personally won't be prepared to vote in any short order, because whatever it may or may not look like, I think would require some time.
And that's, and that's kind of what I saw with, when I went to San Antonio, the reason why they have the greenways and the trails is because the residents wanted it rather than just the bare minimum. And yes, Commissioner Penserga?
I'm on a completely different topic. I'd like to request that we have a.
Before we do that, Commissioner, can I get clarification then? So on the next agenda, shall I put future discussion of?
No.
Parks bond?
Until we get.
April of two twenty twenty, or don't put it on at all and hold off on putting it on future agenda until after?
I did not get a consensus to put it on until, you know, I guess Commissioner McCray did put a consensus on for April and same with Vice Mayor, till April of twenty twenty?
To don't show it at all until April versus show it as with an April date?
So yes, have it, and the first meeting in April, put it on a future agenda item, and then if the commission wants to take it off or discuss it, then we can do it at that time.
Alright, yes, alright. My blood sugar's dipping. I'd like to request that we have a discussion on opportunity zones. It's a topic that we broached, but that conversation died and I'm not quite sure why that died, though we do need to bring it back up. And in that discussion, I'd like that we specifically consider possibly creating an opportunity zone task force. And I know the holidays are coming up and our Vice Mayor won't be here in the next meeting, so I certainly wouldn't mind waiting until maybe January, when we're all present.
I mean, the, I got a thumbs up, yeah, we can look into create a task force, not an advisory board.
Right, task force, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I've got one, and this is exciting. So I'd request a discussion, open-minded discussion, about reviewing the start time of these meetings. I think it's apropos tonight and at one point in the meeting, Commissioner McCray reflected, I think, what a lot of us think, that sometime there's fatigue at some points and you don't want to shortchange people, and a lot of it doesn't necessarily have to do with the duration of the meeting, it's just that if the meeting runs till ten or eleven o'clock, you know, you tune out or you lose out a little bit, and I don't think that's fair to people who present. And having a passing conversation with the Delray Beach Commissioner, I didn't know, because I don't particularly pay close attention to their meetings, but they moved to four PM meetings in the past year. I'm not advocating for any specific time right now, just a discussion, but earlier than six thirty, I think, would hit a better equilibrium. You don't want to start too early and cheat people who are at work from coming, you don't want to run this late, because there's literally two residents here right now that might be more than they're actually here. I see Harry. So I think that we're, I don't want to do it too early, but I think right now six thirty is, is too late for me, so I'd.
I.
Need a discussion about some equilibrium.